Good evening and welcome everyone to the Watertown Zoning Board of Appeals April 22 meeting. Before we get into our agenda items today, what I would like to do is first and foremost thank our first responders, our healthcare heroes, our police and fire, and those essential workers that are working to provide us with food and services during this pandemic here in Watertown and the surrounding communities and in the Commonwealth. I'd also like to very quickly have a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives due to the COVID-19 virus in these past couple of months, members of our local community, surrounding towns, our state, our country, and throughout the world. So if we could very quickly observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I am Melissa Santucci-Rozzi. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals and we're having our meeting via Zoom this evening. So I'm going to ask everybody, all our panelists and people watching on cable, calling in on Zoom to just be patient. This is my first sort of public hearing on Zoom, so I'm going to try to do my best. We would like everybody to stay on mute if you're not speaking. If you do speak, you can unmute your microphone. We just want to try to keep as much of the talking to a minimum. If you have any technical issues with any of the formats that you're using, again, this is on cable right now and you can call in. And in a couple of minutes, we're going to go over a few other different formats in which you can participate in the public hearing session. So what I'd like to do first is roll call vote for the board members that are here with us this evening. Member Ferris?
You're muted. Remember, if you do have it muted, make sure to unmute it. You can leave it unmuted if there's no noise in the background.
Appreciate it. Present. Thank you.
Member Donato?
Present.
Member Heap?
Present.
Member Bragwin?
Present.
Member Floa?
Present.
And I am also present as the Chair. Also with us this evening, we have the Director of Planning and Community Development and our Assistant Town Manager, Steve McGoon. We also have Gideon Schreiber, who's our Senior Planner, and we also have Mike Mena, who is our Zoning Enforcement Officer. And for a short period during the first public hearing, we have a special counsel from Coleman and Page, Amy Questle. What I'd like to do now, very quickly, is have Gideon explain sort of the Zoom format and a little bit about how you can participate and what's going to go on this evening in regards to this meeting and your options. Gideon?
Yes, thank you. On your screen, sorry. On your screen, you should see the agenda for the Zoning Board of Appeals. On the agenda, it identifies different options for viewing the hearing in the meeting. One option is to go to the Watertown Cable Access Television website or to the cable channels that it is broadcast on and watch it live there. If you do want to participate and provide comments during hearings, you would log into the virtual meeting online at Zoom. The webinar ID is 606-857-230, and then you would push pound. I mean, that would allow you to log in as a guest. Within the guest format, you would have options for providing comments. I'm going to leave this up while we're talking. There are several options. One is during a hearing, Melissa Santucci-Rozzi will allow people to speak by raising your hand. There's a function at the bottom of the Zoom meeting that allows you to raise your hand so that it shows a little hand next to your name in your attendee list. Then we would call on you and I would unmute you so that you could speak that way. Mike Mena is also watching the email that we put on the agenda, which is the gshreiber@watertown-ma.gov email. So if you have an email comment for a specific project, you can also email it. You can also call in to just listen to the meeting. We also have an activated question and answer section at the bottom of the screen. For attendees who are logged into the website, they can choose to use that to log in and provide comments on a specific project. At the time of the project, we would speak to those questions verbally. We will not be responding by a written comment. Once a meeting, once a hearing is closed, we will move on to the next comments, to the next agenda item, and we will not be discussing a previous agenda item once that has been completed. Thank you, and I will go back to stop sharing and end the meeting back to Melissa, Chairman.
Thank you, Gideon. And again, just to reiterate, we would really appreciate this evening if people keep their questions on point and related to the project that we're discussing and that all individuals that are recognized, whether they're speaking through the Zoom, calling in, or emailing if you could give your name and address so that we can keep some good minutes for the meeting as well. All the speakers need to identify themselves. Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to quickly again turn it over to another one of our staff members, the Director, Steve McGoon, for him to just make a few opening comments in regards to the meeting this evening and the town moving forward tonight. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome everyone. I just wanted to give a little bit of a background as to why we're having this meeting tonight via virtual meeting and not in person. In times of emergency, local government and municipal business is often at the center of operation and recovery. Watertown's municipal buildings and public spaces are typically the places for the community to come and gather, or come together, excuse me. In this emergency, those options are not available to the community. Those routine has become unavailable. There are a number of aspects of local government that have been deemed to be essential, others not essential. The town is put in a tough position of determining what aspects of government should continue in a virtual setting in which things should stop within expectation that nothing will occur until the state of emergency is lifted. On top of this, the situation is not static with information changing constantly. Public congregation is one aspect of local government we have often taken for granted. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the temporary legislation that was passed by the governor and the legislature does provide some relief to municipalities with regard to process deadlines and how we do business of the town. As we've now been in a state of emergency since March 10, 2020, the town is also trying to be responsive to the needs of the public and property owners. And where possible, we're trying to conduct the business of the town in a reasonable way. Tonight's Zoning Board of Appeals meeting represents this general effort as we conduct the meeting remotely to keep everyone involved home and safe. The town feels it's appropriate to allow existing projects that were disrupted mid-process to have the review and approval process continue to completion. At this time, there's a freeze on new applications, but this allows for some certainty in this uncertain time for existing applications. And I'll just mention too briefly, the application for 148 Waltham Street, an application for comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B will consist of a recommendation to assert safe harbor and therefore no public comment is anticipated. So therefore, that was something we felt was appropriate to move forward. The application for 85 Walnut Street was originally filed in November of 2019. It was first heard by the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals in December of 2019. It's been on the agenda and continued in January, February, and March. The other applications similarly have been continued from March and are awaiting a decision from the town. So I just wanted to make those comments to kind of set the context. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you. Okay, so Gideon had the agenda up a little while ago, and that's on the website too if you're interested. Before we get into the hearings and the matters at hand, do you have administrative matter for the approval of the February 26, 2020 minutes? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February meeting.
Is there a second to approve?
Second.
From February?
Second.
The motion's made and been seconded. We need to do a roll call vote. Member Donato?
Aye.
Yes. Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Floa?
Aye.
And member Chair Santucci-Rozzi, aye. Member Ferris was absent at that meeting and he's not participating in the vote. I can call everyone's attention to the agenda. For the cases that will be discussed this evening, they will be discussed in the order in which they appear on the agenda. As you'll note, at the bottom of the agenda, there's a section that says the following projects will not be discussed and will be withdrawn. What I'd like to do at this time is make those motions for continuation as well as the motions for withdrawal. The first matter is 5254 Channing Road. That will not be heard this evening. Is there a motion to continue that matter to May 27?
Madam Chair, so moved.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor by roll call. Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, Chair Santucci-Rozzi, aye. Second matter, 99 to 101 Lexington Street. The applicant has requested the application be withdrawn. Is there a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Floa?
Aye.
And myself, Chair Santucci-Rozzi. The third matter that will not be discussed this evening is 18 to 20 Clyde Road. I actually missed testimony in this matter and will not be participating in the vote. However, is there a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw this application without prejudice?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
And member Floa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving along to the cases that will be discussed this evening. The first matter is the public hearing for the comprehensive permit at 148 Walnut Street. The applicant is the Nord Bloom Development Company. Member Ferris will be recusing himself from this matter. He has expressed to myself and the staff that he has a conflict. He will not be participating or voting in this case. And again, just noting that we have attorney Amy Questle here from K&amp;P Law in regards to this matter and noting for the record that both alternates will be participating and voting on this comprehensive permit. What I'd like to do now is read the legal notice and open the public hearing. Todd Nordboom, Nord Bloom Development Company, Inc., requests the Zoning Board of Appeals grant a comprehensive permit in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, for the demolition of the existing former starlet lumber buildings and to construct a 253-unit residential building, the first-floor ground parking, located in the Pleasant Street corridor, District 3, zoning district. I just wanted to very quickly make a few comments. As Steve had pointed out earlier, we are not going to be discussing the merits of this case this evening. We are not going to be conducting any type of presentations from the applicant, nor are we going to be entertaining any public comment. Again, we're not discussing the merits of this case. We have received some comments from the public, and those will be held off and those will be taken up if and when we do decide to entertain anything related to this comprehensive permit application. At this time, I would like to call to the Board's attention to make a motion regarding our safe harbor position. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Board determines that the town of Watertown has achieved one of the statutory minima standards set forth in General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, and 760 CMR 56.033. Because the town's subsidized housing inventory, as maintained by the Department of Housing and Community Development, referred to as DHED, on the date that the application for a comprehensive permit was received from Nord Bloom Development Company Incorporated for the property located at 148 Waltham Street comprises more than 1.5% of the town's total land area zoned for residential, commercial, and industrial use pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20. The Board elects to proceed with the full local hearing with the Board having the right to deny the application or grant the application with conditions and with the finding that the Board's denial or grant of the application would be consistent with local needs and with the applicant having no right of appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee from the Board's decision. The Board authorizes the Chair to finalize, execute, and send written notice to the applicant with a copy to DHED to invoke the 1.5% general land area minimum statutory minima within 15 days of the opening of the April 22, 2020, public hearing on the application.
Thank you, Member Donato. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor by a roll call vote. Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Floa?
Aye.
And Chair Santucci-Rozzi votes aye. Is there a second motion regarding the comprehensive permit application?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to continue the public hearing for the comprehensive permit for Nord Bloom Development Company Incorporated for 148 Waltham Street until July 22, 2020.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Floa?
Aye.
And an aye vote for Chair Santucci-Rozzi. Okay, we're going to be moving on to our second public hearing. This is a continued public hearing. 85 Walnut Street and 101 Walnut Street. They're two separate applications. They're being discussed jointly as they're very related to one another. I will note for the record that Member Heap missed testimony in December, and he will not be participating in this matter. And that both the alternates, Member Floa and Member Bragwin, will be participating in voting this evening. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant for the start of their presentation and introduction of anybody on their team that's going to be presenting this evening.
Evening, everyone. I hope you and your families are all well and safe. My name is Matt Price with Westwood Partners, the owner of the 85 Walnut Street property. I'd first like to thank the Zoning Board and town staff for their hard work to prepare for this meeting, to put this together during these unusual times. You know, a lot of work has gone into this and it's very much appreciated from us as we're excited to be before you again tonight. Since it has been several months since our first presentation before the Board, tonight, we will provide a brief overview to reorient everyone on the project and how we arrived at the design before you today. Thereafter, and most importantly, the folks of the presentation will be responding to the specific comments and questions we received from you as Board members and the community at our last meeting. At that meeting, we were asked to provide further details on the stormwater improvements we're making, which Roy Smith from RJ O'Connell will speak to. We were also asked to provide more context and perspective of the impact of the project relative to Birch Road. So we will share some elevations, renderings, and sections to respond to that. And we'll also share some changes we've made to the design since that meeting to further buffer the project's impact from those abutters. And finally, we will provide a number of elevations, renderings, and material references to give more color to the project's design materials and what the neighborhood experience will be as they interact with the project. We also have the rest of our team available to respond to any other questions once we finish. But for now, I will share my screen, turn it over to John Sullivan, who's going to guide you through this presentation, and I will be back to respond to questions at the end.
Hi, I'm John Sullivan, partner at SGA. We're the architects for the 85 Walnut Street project. I'm happy to be here virtually tonight before the Board, the planning staff, and the community to present this project, which we're very excited by. So as Matt introduced, you know, we would like to just give a refresher on, you know, the project's program and what we presented briefly in December before getting into more detail about the project and the areas that Matt referenced. So as an overview, the proposal for a commercial R&amp;D and lab building of about 213,500 square feet, which represents a 1.0 FAR in the site. The building's planned to be four stories, and we're also proposing that there's a structure parking component to the project. The maximum parking proposed to be provided is 562 spaces, but we are anticipating 398 spaces by employing parking reduction and shadow parking strategies. We're also providing almost 100 bike spaces in terms of spaces provided interior and exterior to the site. And we're very excited by our open space component, which is a large park that represents 32,000 square feet, I'm sorry, 32% of open space on the site. So just, you know, by way of refresher, our, you know, site location is along the Arsenal Street commercial corridor. And, you know, that's, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the slide to dance here. There it is. The, you know, the site location has a Walnut Street address and frontage, but it's located along Arsenal Street commercial corridor. We think that's important because it ties into the goals of the strategic framework and the comprehensive plan in terms of its use and, you know, really strengthening, you know, strengthening this corridor as a mixed-use part of Watertown. We wanted to run through a quick highlight of our evolution of design because it really explains why we've, you know, located the buildings where they are on the site. What you can see here is just the existing site conditions. You know, there's about a 90,000-square-foot building on the site today. You know, where it's located, there's the 101 Walnut Street to the east, which is Page North. So this highlights, you know, the site's boundaries. It's a 4.9-acre site. We looked at, you know, understanding what the site's buildable area would be. So through the zoning, defining setbacks, establishing a build-to line along Walnut Street, understanding the height. And I think I should point out that the site has a considerable amount of topography. You know, the delta between entering the site at Walnut Street versus the Arsenal Street side is about 15 feet. And I think that's important in terms of how it informed how we laid out the site. So as we started to, you know, test ideas, we looked at a couple of approaches. One was, you know, understanding, you know, kind of maintain consistency with the Arsenal Street corridor and looking at, you know, the build-to line prescribed along Walnut Street and thinking that we may, you know, place parking there. I think in examining this, we really, we quickly understood that a concern of ours was, you know, proximity of any structure towards the Birch Road neighborhood or the Walnut Street neighborhood. We also looked at, you know, flipping that idea and thinking, you know, maybe the building would be closer to Walnut Street and the parking would be closer to Arsenal Street. But that seemed, you know, equally concerning to put the building, you know, close to the neighborhood, and it also seemed inconsistent to put the garage along the Arsenal Street corridor. So as we evolved our thinking, we felt like, you know, we really wanted to locate the building mass on the lower portion of the site to use the topography to our benefit and to, you know, consolidate the building along the Arsenal Street corridor, generally in the location of the building where it's located today. And that afforded us an opportunity to provide a significant open space along Walnut Street to expand, you know, the park that's located there in its current form. And I think by doing that, you know, we felt that, you know, that was a sensitive approach to the neighborhood. You know, we really pushed to minimize the footprint, pushed the building towards Arsenal Street, pushed the structured parking towards 101 Walnut Street, and provide a considerable amount of landscape buffer towards Birch Road neighborhood and Walnut Street and the residential abutters. So with that said, this is the, you know, this is the proposed plan that we reviewed in December. This shows the building, about a 50,000-square-foot floor plate aligned towards Arsenal Street in the, in the location of the existing building. It's a four-story building, as you can see with the, through the section graphic on the, on the top. It's, you know, well over 450 feet away from Walnut Street, 70 feet from Arsenal Street. And then the structured parking, which again is aligned towards 101 Walnut Street and is almost 200 feet away from Walnut Street to provide for the, for the shared park. Another big component of this project that I think is worth noting is, you know, working to really improve the site's access. In its current form, you know, the project has one entry on Walnut Street. We've worked very hard to gain an access easement with our abutter at 101 Walnut Street to allow vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle circulation through the site, you know, to make that connection between Walnut Street and Arsenal Street. And also, as you'll see later, to improve the entry at Walnut Street, I mean, I'm sorry, at Arsenal Street, aligning the intersection with Louis Street and really, you know, allowing this project to have, you know, as a life science building, to have an Arsenal Street presence. So, you know, transportation, you know, that was the high-level circulation strategy. I think there's a couple of other things we wanted to hit on as it related to transportation and some of this we had shared in December. But, you know, really, in terms of offsite improvements, we've been collaborating with the, with the town staff and with the DPW to, you know, strengthen, you know, provide a couple of areas where we can improve pedestrian circulation and provide more safe street crossings through bumpouts, through improved crosswalks, and through some signage and signaling. One area that's being proposed is at Lincoln Street, along Lincoln Street and Walnut Street. Another area that's being proposed is along Walnut Street opposite the entry to the park that we're proposing. And in that same, you know, mindset, another area of offsite improvement where we're, you know, proposing bumping out the corner that, you know, from a vehicular and pedestrian standpoint has been deemed, you know, unsafe in its current form, is at the intersection of Cypress Street and Walnut Street. So we feel like that those three, you know, improvements are considerable as it ties into the, to the Walnut Street neighborhood. Another area of focus is along Arsenal Street, and this is what I had mentioned in terms of, you know, access into our site through an easement with 101 Walnut Street and a reconfigured approach. And really, you know, to highlight the existing condition, you know, which is problematic as it relates to pedestrian safety and vehicular movement, there's an offset condition as it exists today. So Louis Street meets Arsenal Street, you know, an offset condition to where the 101 Walnut Street entrance meets Arsenal Street. There's a crosswalk in between, which again poses some safety issues. And right now, there are no turn lanes, so it can also be an area that, you know, presents some traffic problems. What we're proposing is an improved intersection, aligning the entrance to 101 Walnut Street with Louis Street, providing a signalized connection, facilitating the, you know, the cycle track which exists today and will be, you know, preserved and strengthened through this design. And then introducing an aligned crosswalk, which we think, you know, is a much better condition from a safety standpoint. And then also introducing two dedicated turn lanes, which we think is going to, which we think will, you know, provide a much better transit circulation through this, through this intersection and, you know, mitigate traffic along this corridor. So we're excited by that, and that, you know, represents, you know, some current thinking about some of the offsite improvements that we have been coordinating with the, with the town. So with that, at the presentation in December, you know, we introduced some stormwater concepts. We wanted to provide some more detail on that. So now I'll turn the, turn the screen over to Roy Smith with RJ O'Connell. We wanted to provide some more detail on that. So now I'll turn the, turn the screen over to Roy Smith with RJ O'Connell. He is our site and civil engineer.
Thank you, John. My name is Roy Smith. I work for RJ O'Connell and Associates. We are the site civil engineers for the project. John, if you could switch, thank you. The first screen that I'm showing here is in what I want to review is basically the existing stormwater management system, which is non-existent, and then go over the proposed stormwater management and then summarize the collection, controlling, and treatment of the stormwater management through the proposed BMPs, which are best management practices. As, as John alluded to earlier, the site has a big topographic change from Walnut Street down to the Arsenal Street corridor. And it's about 15 to 20 feet in some cases. So under the existing conditions, the stormwater from the site all comes down the hill off of Walnut Street, which is the high point, and heads towards the northeast corner of the site where you see the existing culvert on the north, plan north. That existing culvert is what we refer to as the point of analysis. From a stormwater management perspective, the site is pretty simple. It has one point of analysis and one watershed going to that point of analysis. From an existing conditions perspective, the, there is a small existing park up against Walnut Street and very limited landscape for the remainder of the site. The existing landscape or open space of the site is approximately 22%. And the reason why I bring that up is where one of our treatment measures is source reduction. And as you can see here in this proposed plan, we're proposing an expansion to that park up along Walnut Street. And the way we were able to accomplish that is the existing driveway that is on our property and goes up to Walnut Street, we have abandoned that and we're going to turn that area from pavement into park area or open space area and recreational areas. We also have received and working with our abutters at 101 Walnut Street, and that is now going to be a shared driveway with 101, very similar to the shared driveway going up to Arsenal Street. So that was, that was, that was a big thing from a source reduction perspective. The existing conditions, it has a collection system, but the collection system has zero treatment or zero controlling measures for the stormwater runoff. And all of it goes to that same point of analysis, that existing culvert northeast of the plan. And that has zero treatment currently. And so what we did when we started looking at the proposed site conditions is what treatment measures and how do we want to design the site to get and maximize controlling and treating the stormwater runoff leaving the site from the existing conditions? Once again, the existing conditions has no treatment or control measures. It basically gets collected in the pipe system and discharged right to the existing culvert and then eventually goes to the Charles River watershed basin. What we did originally is we looked at source reduction. And by locating the buildings, as John mentioned earlier, on the Arsenal Street side and on the plan north side closest to 101, we were able to increase the park in what we refer to as increasing the open space and decreasing the impervious coverage, which we refer to as source reduction. We also used some low-impact development techniques. Associated with the increased parking recreational area up on Walnut Street, we implemented what they refer to as a rain garden area. That rain garden area then gets collected through a closed drainage system, which consists of catch basins with depots and sumps. Then it goes to a poticle separator, and then it goes to subsurface infiltration systems. John, if you could go back to the earlier slide just for a second. What you see here in blue are the subsurface infiltration systems. We have four subsurface infiltration systems, and three of the systems are 52-inch corrugated metal pipes. And the third, the fourth system, which is plan north, the blue area dashed, is a 72-inch pipe. So it's considerable storage. And then if you could slip back to the other screen, John, I appreciate it. Thank you. By implementing those, those best management practices for the treatment train, the rain garden, the catch basins, the poticle separators, and then ultimately goes through the infiltration system. What we were able to do is significantly decrease both the peak rates of runoff and the volumes leaving the site from the existing conditions. As I said, under the existing conditions, there's very little treatment, storage from the existing conditions. As you can see in the stormwater summary table on the upper right-hand portion of this page, we analyzed ten, four storm events, the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm event. And what I want to point out is under the two-year storm events, we have zero discharge from the site, both from a peak flow perspective and a volume perspective. That's basically what we do is retain the, all the runoff, the storm runoff from that two-year event and infiltrate that in increased groundwater recharge, which is a significant improvement to water quality because there is no runoff. So you basically get 100% total suspended solids removal rate from a water quality perspective. And even in the 100-year storm, we're reducing the peak flows by approximately 60%, volumes by about 46%. So that's a significant improvement over the existing conditions from the site. As I mentioned, the infiltration systems, the four infiltration systems that we designed, also increased groundwater recharge, which is important for the Charles River basin as well. The last item is the water quality of the stormwater management leaving the site is significantly increased over existing conditions as well. And we do that by those treatment measures, what we refer to as the treatment train. This is an industrial site, industrial zoned and commercial site. So our water quality volume based on the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy is only one inch. And what we're treating and storing and infiltrating under the two-year event is actually 3.2 inches because we use the Cornell precipitation rates. With that said, I, in summary, it's a significant improvement over existing stormwater runoff leaving the site both from a peak flow, volume, groundwater recharge, and water quality. Thanks, John, I think.
Thanks, Roy.
I'll be available with the questions.
Great. Thank you, Roy. So I'd like to, you know, moving forward, I'd like to hit on our landscape approach. Again, we referenced, you know, we referenced the park that we, you know, that we're very excited by, you know, favoring Walnut Street. You know, this is the plan we wanted to, to share, to highlight what we had presented in, in December because we made some changes as it ties into some of our buffering strategies. What I'd like to walk you through briefly is just, you know, the, the open space opportunities on the site and really how we're thinking about this as a series of experiences that ties in a more comprehensive open space plan. So starting at Walnut Street, you know, as part of this large park, you know, we're defining a zone to allow people to transition from the residential neighborhood to the park setting. So within this space, we'll include seating, we'll include some bicycle amenities in terms of bike, bike stations and, you know, repair kiosk. And really, you know, we view this zone as, as a way to welcome neighbors into, you know, what is, what we think is a pretty wonderful neighborhood park. So moving into the park and working your way slightly down the topography is really the, the central area of the park. And this, this green space, you know, will be nice and open, but it's also surrounded by native plantings, tree canopies, and some softer edges to allow for an open space for, you know, multi-purpose use by the community. Light recreation, gathering, events, you know, we're excited that this space itself can be a great amenity to the neighborhood. And that transitions us closer, you know, towards the lower part of the hill, where we feel like we take advantage of some of that topography and offer, you know, a zone where people can, you know, gather in a more intimate level to have lunch, you know, meet a friend, and, and have, you know, maybe be a transition space between the open part of the park and, and the development at the bottom of the hill. So those are the, you know, those are the three zones that kind of take you through the site. And what we wanted to highlight as a, as a change was, you know, removing some of the surface parking as you transition from, you know, the areas that I just described towards the, towards the structured parking and further towards the building. So that allowed us to provide an area to add a lot more planting and trees, deciduous trees and coniferous trees to, you know, to factor into our, our buffering strategy and to improve the pedestrian flow from Walnut Street through the site towards Arsenal Street. So as we start to define those zones, this highlights, you know, again, what that allowed us to do. It's a considerable amount of planning that we can, that we can place here. And we, we felt like that was important because that was, you know, where the building gets, you know, hits its closest point towards the property line. And again, you can see some of the plantings that are being proposed, but we felt like, you know, removing parking spaces along that edge was, was really important to, to facilitate this type of planning and to also allow for a better pedestrian experience. So as pedestrians, you know, move through this space along the garage, that was another area of concern that we felt like we could, you know, improve by adding trellises and scalable elements to, you know, make that feel like a comfortable pedestrian-friendly experience. We're introducing green screening along the garage. So again, that's another buffering strategy, but also gives a much more pleasant, you know, pedestrian experiences as people traverse the site. And ultimately, that leads to, you know, as you move closer to Arsenal Street, you know, that leads to an entry for the building. You know, so that we feel strongly that the building has, has a nice entry point, an arrival point for, for visitors. And this is also part of that experience as people, you know, move past the garage, move past the building, and ultimately connect to the driveway along Arsenal Street. This, we think, can be a really special moment, you know, celebrated with hardscape elements, with trees, with seat walls. And really, as you, you'll see in some further renderings, we feel like this can be, you know, a really welcoming moment for the building and also just another, another experience as part of that, you know, pedestrian movement. So at the last meeting, you know, we had, we had talked about the garage and we wanted to share some more detail. And what we'd like to highlight today are some thoughts on the screening techniques as well as on the garage design itself. So you can see, you know, some elevations that, you know, that were not part of the last presentation. They really highlight the increase in, in screening along, you know, along the two faces of the garage that face, you know, not only Walnut Street in the north elevation, but in the upper elevation, the west elevation facing, you know, Birch Road. So we've increased the, we've increased the garage green screen, and we've located them strategically to fill in any, you know, gaps in between trees. And we really felt like that was important as a, as another, you know, element in that buffering strategy. We also looked at, you know, material. And I think, you know, what's important to us for the, the material of the garage itself is that we have the opportunity to introduce a warmer color. Color will be important to us. And we're shown some examples at the bottom, particularly the image that's second in from the right with some scoring opportunities, some color. So we feel like the more natural that becomes, that it plays into that, into that buffering strategy. You can see from the next image, you know, approximating a view from, from the, from the Birch Road residents, you know, this, this is, you know, the culmination of that view. So it employs green screens, you know, planting within the parking field and then planting along the edges, which, which again provides a layered approach to how this garage will be screened. Moving forward, you know, to describe that experience in more detail, we, we created a series of images that, you know, really stripped away those layers so that, you know, we could highlight, you know, those, those efforts being made. So in the next image, you know, really to describe those relationships, you know, we approximated two vantage points, one between 18 and 20 and 24 Birch Road and one at 26 Birch Road. And really what we tried to do was, you know, again, highlighting some of those, you know, distances, you know, ranging from 90 feet to 150 feet. You know, really identifying the strategy to, you know, to provide a considerable amount of landscaping. So visually, we wanted to demonstrate that. So, you know, looking at, again, the overall view, this, this is approximating the view between 18 and 20 and 24 Birch Road. And again, you can see, you know, part of the park off to the left-hand image. You can see, you know, the, the first line in the, in the series of plantings with some coniferous plantings right along the property line. And then you can see some of the planting that transitions at the edge of the garage with some higher trees and then the green screens in, in the, in the background. So kind of going through this step by step. At the garage, you know, the furthest point, we'd have green screens. We've notched away the corner here, which has allowed us to provide some additional planting. When you step out from that, there's some planting that, you know, by the way that we've aligned the entry drive, there's some planting that exists outside of that, which again provides a considerable amount of visual buffering. And then lastly, along the, the property line and most close to the, to the, to the neighborhood, there's a considerable amount of planting along that edge. So really, the strategy was to, you know, look for those opportunities to provide, you know, deciduous and coniferous plantings, you know, in, in the zones. And then where we felt like we needed some additional screening to apply some green screen to the garage. You can see what that image is like. So then we did the same for 26 Birch Road, again, trying to be sensitive to properties that were in closest proximity. This, this represents that view. And as you start to peel that away, similar to the last sequence, you know, again, on the garage itself, there's green screens. These are strategically aligned where we felt like there may be, you know, lines of sight. When you pull away from that by removing that parking and adding some additional island space into the parking fields, that's where we can get some more planting, you know, moving towards the residential neighborhood. And then again, along that edge, you know, being mindful to provide a consistent, you know, consistent wall of planting. So all of those, all of those elements working together, we feel like, you know, provides a strong visual buffer, you know, towards, towards the building and towards the garage. We also wanted to demonstrate as, as part of our landscape approach, you know, that, that lighting will play into this, and that's also a sensitivity of ours through this, you know, through this process. So, you know, really what we've, what we focused on is minimizing the lighting, you know, making sure that it's a safe environment, but minimizing it to the point where, you know, we're providing the, the least amount of lighting possible to, to be sensitive towards the neighborhood. All of the lighting that you see along the entry drive is proposed to be bollard, so that'll be four feet off the ground, very low. There's some specific lighting at some of the seating areas within the park, but again, those would be, those would be low, those aren't on posts. And at the garage itself and, and on the building, all of those fixtures would be shielded. They'd be downward facing, they'd be compliant with any night sky regulations, and they'd be, you know, they'd be on timers so that, you know, when there was not movement in that garage, there'd be no need for lighting. So, you know, we think, we've worked hard with our lighting consultants to provide what we think is a, you know, sensitive and comprehensive plan around lighting. So as we, you know, as we, you know, now think about, you know, that experience that we're creating between Walnut Street and Arsenal Street, we, we put together a series of images that we felt like would be helpful to describe, you know, if you're a cyclist, if you're a pedestrian, you know, what that, what that experience would feel like. So starting at, at Walnut Street, or actually, I'm sorry, starting with the existing conditions, you know, this reflects, you know, what that experience would be like today. And Roy had mentioned that, you know, there's, there's really not, you know, there's very little impervious area other than at the, the small park that exists there today. There's a lot of pavement, there's not a lot of sidewalk space or defined pedestrian zone. So we feel like, you know, what's, what's lacking there today really presents us with an opportunity. So starting that sequence at, you know, at Walnut Street, and this, this slide here just identifies the different points that we've tried to, you know, highlight from an experience standpoint as people traverse the site between Walnut Street and Arsenal Street. Starting at Arsenal Street, you know, looking towards the, towards the building, you know, you're, you're really interfacing with this park. So we're really excited about this. We feel like this is, you know, a really welcoming experience. And, and there's pathways through the park to walk through the site as well as to, you know, to break out and to enjoy the park as well. So a lot of planting, a lot of visual buffering towards the development from the Walnut Street side, as you can see, see here through, through different types of plantings and different techniques. And again, a highlight on that, on that crossing. This is the, the shared entry drive that Roy mentioned. This is, this is important. This was also achieved, you know, with an access easement, and this allows for a safer connection, but also expands that park. So you can really see to the left of this image that expanded park and what that experience may be like. As you move further into the site, you know, now I'm sorry, I'm waiting for my screen to catch up here. But as you move further into the site and you're, you know, walking next to that garage, you know, we really wanted to be sensitive about, you know, what that pedestrian experience would be like. We didn't want it to be uncomfortable for people, you know, being, being close to that garage. But we feel like it was a nice opportunity to introduce a lot of planting. Again, this is where you can see the articulation of those. Again, this is where you can see the articulation of those green screens. And then some scalable elements that we're showing as these, you know, proposed trellises that really bring down that scale and personalize it. And I think between that, the green screens, and then some of the planting that was added up to the right, that was really meant to, you know, facilitate a positive pedestrian experience along, along the garage to pull you across the site. As you, you know, continue to move towards Arsenal Street and you, you know, start to encounter the building, we're, we're excited by this. We feel like, you know, there's a defined, you know, through hardscape, through landscape and through some of the building articulation, there's going to be a defined path for people to, you know, to continue to move through the site on, on foot or on bike. We've pushed in the lower level of the building here. You can see it steps in a little bit in the foreground to provide a covered walkway between this point of the site and the, and the building entry, which will allow people to continue past the building in a covered environment and then, you know, continue on towards Arsenal Street. As you, as you step away from the building, I'll, I'll, I'll speak a little bit more to the architecture when we, when we talk about, you know, what inspired us from a building design standpoint. But this highlights, you know, highlights that moment at the entry. So the way the building is masked, there is a recess at the entry to, to break this down into two smaller sized elements to really call out where people enter the building. And again, through, you know, through hardscape and landscape, we feel like this can be a really special and welcoming space. Also provide people, you know, an opportunity to sit, rest and enjoy that space as part of that experience. And then, you know, now we're, now we're part of that entry drive that connects to Arsenal Street. So you can, you know, you can see from, from that experience, you know, there's a lot of improvements being proposed along that entry drive to make it pedestrian friendly, sidewalks, planting, you know, some traffic calming measures. And, and this is how you'd experience the building from, from that site. So you can see four-story building, you know, masked in such a way to really define that entry to recess the, the lower volume for the pedestrian experience. You know, here we've recessed the upper volume for an amenity on the building. It's a roof deck that we think adds visual interest from this, from this vantage point. There'll be some more information about the, about the roof screen in further slides, but this gives you a sense of, you know, from a massing standpoint, how that feels. And then pulling back to beyond the, the new entry connection and the, and the signalized intersection at Louis Street and, and the 101 Arsenal Street, you know, driveway. You know, this gives you a sense of, of, of the building's presence from Arsenal Street. So it really does turn its front face towards this driveway. And, you know, this would be, as described before, from a traffic and pedestrian standpoint, a much safer and better organized condition. So from an experience standpoint, that's, you know, those images we felt like would be helpful. We, we also wanted to, you know, highlight the building design because there was some, you know, there's some discussion about this at the last meeting. We did introduce the idea of what inspired us, you know, we're extremely excited about designing in Watertown. We're inspired by the Watertown Arsenal and a lot of the history here and a lot of that history of industrial architecture. You know, that's really special and unique. And we felt like that was an opportunity to, you know, to, to inspire us and to, and to think about how that could be incorporated into a modern lab at R and D building. The next slide shows some images, some of our work at Clark's and Walt Ham and some of our work at Link's also in Watertown, as well as some other projects, which we feel like represent an interesting, you know, modern expression and modern interpretation of that industrial style. So we feel like we really want to celebrate that. We feel like that's really something special about Watertown. And it can be put forth in a progressive way to also, you know, announce a, a building that's pretty forward looking and, and, you know, focused on research and science and technology. So, so we were, we were excited to achieve that through this design. One, you know, one specific piece of this that, that came up as part of our last conversation was the, was the roof screen. The way that it was rendered before admittedly was, was very flat and that was not our intent. Our intent is to employ some corrugation and some, some metals that have some real texture and richness and rhythm at, at the top of the roof. So again, the, the roof screen is not meant to compete with the building facades they, what they want to receive. But we will be paying special attention to material, to rhythm and to depth so that it's, you know, provides a nice transition between the building and the sky. And, you know, and, you know, supports the architecture that's being proposed down below. So along, you know, the, the elevations describe, you know, some of the, the building articulation and rhythms. So again, here's, I think where you best see, you know, some of the, the, here's where you best see our interpretation of that industrial style. So we're introducing windows that pick up, you know, the, the window millions pick up on that type of rhythm that was defined in, in historic industrial architecture. There's, you know, kind of an organi- an organization and a, and a rigor in the facade design that we've worked through pretty closely with David Gamble to, you know, to achieve those goals. And there's a, you know, I, I think a rich use of materials that, that support that. So that, you know, the idea is that the building's repetitive, but the massing, you know, breaks it down to be very comfortable. We're employing, you can see in the, in the lower band of imagery, the, the image from the second from the left kind of gives you a sense of what the main portion of the building will feel like. And then the image next to it on the left is where we'd employ an accent material that's more rich in color, evokes some, you know, like a, almost like a Corten steel type of feel, be a metal. And we feel like that would be a very special, you know, piece of the building. And that's the facade actually that faces Arsenal Street in that entry sequence. One thing to note too, is that, you know, because we're trying to express this industrial style, you know, we're excited to expose some of the steel framing in certain areas. So we're cut back for the roof deck. There's some exposed steel framing. Where we cut back for the pedestrian passage, there's some exposed steel framing, which the image in the lower right starts to, you know, starts to, you know, give an, give an example of. So, you know, with, with all the massing and, and that facade articulation, this gives you a sense of, you know, how the, how the building looks, how it's experienced. This is the Arsenal Street side where we employ the, you know, the, the accent material, expose some of the steel framing, you know, really pay attention to the proportion and the rhythm and the depth at, at the windows to, you know, to, to celebrate that industrial vernacular in a way that we're really excited about in the, you know, the context of this building. So I think this image here up close to, to us really celebrates, you know, a lot of that, a lot of the detail that goes into the facade, the window rhythm, the materials and, and the depth of, you know, some of the elements that we think will make this very special. So we're, we're excited and I want to hit on all the high notes that, you know, to, to give a refresher from the last presentation, but also to clarify some of the areas where, you know, where there were some questions last time. With that, we have our whole team available. And we're happy to answer any, any additional questions that the, that the board may have.
Okay, um, what I'd like to do now is, if the presentation can be removed from your screen, what I'd like to do is I would like to open it up to board member comments. And I will start with Member Donato. Do you have any questions or comments regarding this application?
I do. Thanks, Madam Chair. I first want to start off by thanking the team, the quality of the project and materials. You know, the open space, the park, the connectivity, the realignment with Louis Street, I, I, just everything. I really want to thank you all. And then on to just a few questions. On the green panels, I really appreciate what you've done and I like them a lot. I just want to understand first how long it may take to get that growth as illustrated on that? Just so that neighbors who might be watching it may have a reasonable expectation when it might fill out.
Sure, this is Matt Price, John Burke. I'm going to let Blair, our landscape architect, speak to that.
Hi, for the record, Blair Hines, landscape architect. And I, that's a very good question. During the first growing year, so if they're planting this spring, they should get about eight, 10 feet high. We're, we're going to be planting it with several different species. Then they will grow probably between five and six to eight years, depending on the species each year. So I would say getting to the top of the, the structure, which is I believe about 40 feet, is probably going to be about six or seven years is what I would estimate. Now, please, people should also know that vines in that condition also have a tendency to die back a little bit in the winter, depending if it's a really, really cold winter. So there may be some situations where, you know, there's some dieback. But for the most part, we're picking very hardy plants and they should get up there in about, as I said, about six, seven years.
Thank you. I think, I think that's really helpful for people to understand and have, have that in mind. And then my next question, I, I appreciate how strategic you were about the green panels. But I'm just wondering if we can go, I think it's page 44 of 64. I'm just wondering on that location too, on the west elevation, if it might be possible to make two of those single panels, double panels that first appear from the left? Because it looked like there still might be some of a gap.
So if I can drop one second, Member Donato, that's an excellent question. We have an old presentation on that we're referring to, which was in March. If you folks have that, and I think Member Donato, you said it was, is there a number in the bottom right-hand corner of, of the page that you're looking at?
I believe it was page like 44, but let me, let me double check.
Or if we can put up a, a shot of.
It was the, sorry, it was the last page before neighborhood experience.
Okay.
I'd like to confirm with the project team that the March materials would have that same green screen. So I've gone ahead and shared my screen. Is that, is that visible to everyone?
Yes, we can see that, sir.
Okay, perfect. So this is, I believe, tell you if I'm not mistaken, the image you're, you're pointing to and the, I think our goal would be to move these green screens around to kind of cover any areas. And I think as we kind of walk through and I'll, I'll scroll through the kind of layering strategy here, the goal was to kind of install those green screens where they think kind of there would be the most gap through the plantings in front. So this, if you see that first layer there, be followed by the plantings in front and the intent is that that green screen is covering. These, these may move around here and there as everything is finalized. And I would, if you, if you refer to the, the, the plan to the left, you can, you can kind of see where the larger trees are and suggest where there may be openings from various angles. And at the foreground, along the property line, there's a couple existing large trees that are remaining. So those will block out a lot of area where a green screen may not be needed. And it's perhaps other angles where those trees on the property line aren't buffering that we would be kind of more heavily add the, the green screen. So the, the rendering does its, its best to inform what the, the view will be and it will change from various angles. But I think the ultimate goal is to be responsive to your comment and use those green screens carefully where there isn't taller plantings in front of the garage.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Just looks like the first two single panel green screens, it's, it looks like it's still a little thin there with the trees as well. Those first two from the left. Can you move those green screens? Do they slide?
They, they don't. But to just echo Matt's, Matt's comment, I think, you know, our goal is if we see a gap like that to, to fill it in. So I think to your question, if those, if the, you know, the single screens can become multiple screens, they can. And we'd really look to, you know, that's a helpful comment because we'd look for places where, where you can see between the trees to, to double up on those screens. So I think that would be, that would be our intent, understanding that the, the rendering's not showing that well.
Yeah. And I think to expand on that, John, this is the case, the second screen from the left at, at current, when we slide to the tree plants in the foreground, that green screen is kind of covered in that, from that angle. So that would be a case where maybe that green screen location isn't doing its job and we can take that and move it further down. So that's kind of what I was referring to in terms of moving those around.
Great, great. Thank you. And then just some lighting questions. Will there be lighting in the park at all? Soft lighting? And especially I'm thinking, you know, at night, what will, what will it be for safety there?
There will be. And our, you know, our plan kind of highlights a few areas where that happens. We were trying to work with our consultant to make sure that there were safe levels of lighting. You know, particularly around, you know, where people may gather, what we're highlighting, highlighting in the left, where it's, where it looks illuminated in the left part of this image is where there's some stairs to, to walk. That, that, all that lighting will be low. And then all of the lighting along the entry drive, which you see will also be low, be like bollard height lighting. So we're trying to walk a, a balance between providing, you know, lighting that met certain safety thresholds, but was also just very visually minimal for the, for the neighborhood. So that, that was the, that's the goal.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks. And then lighting in the building at night with all the glass, is it, is there going to be kind of a soft glow at some point? And then will it shut off? Or just so I can understand that?
Yeah, I think the goal. Pardon me?
I love all the glass though, by the way.
Sure, thank you. So, so I think the goal would be in the evening to reduce the lighting as much as possible. And I think what you, what you don't want, you know, you don't want the, the lights kind of fully lit in every room. So I think it's kind of minimal lighting as needed for security to give the sense that there, there is some safety and security and not an empty building. But we, you know, certainly the entire building would not be lit up. We're trying to be as sensitive as possible to the residents who are living there. So similar in terms of the strategy onsite, in terms of having dimly lit lighting onsite and not having a bright condition in the evening. The same goal would be to activate that in the building itself.
And, and that will be mostly controlled by occupants' sensors, you know, as, as most, you know, interior design concepts are now. So the idea would be that at night when no one's in the office, you know, unless something triggered that, that would be, you know, the, the lowest levels possible.
And the next question about sound attenuation, especially on the roof with HVAC. Just so people can hear about, about that.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. You know, again, we're, at, at the point we're at now, we're working through more specific specifications for the mechanical equipment. But our goal is to place the majority of the equipment that can be in, you know, internal thing will be in an enclosed penthouse. And there'll be some acoustically treated loopers that will, you know, that will enclose that penthouse along with, with, you know, a good, a good amount of solid wall. We're, we'll also specify sound attenuation to all of that equipment, you know, to meet, you know, what the acceptable thresholds are. So that's, you know, strategy that we often employ and that we will, you know, work towards with, you know, with our engineering team. Everything will be screened, even the exterior, you know, even the exterior equipment will be screened, you know, with, with the screen wall, which will also provide another layer of acoustical prevention.
Great, thank you. I think it might be helpful too, at some point, and I'll, I'll pause here to let the other members go with their questions, but it might be helpful just to touch on traffic at some point. And perhaps some of the other members might have questions about it, but especially people listening from home. I know that's probably something they'd like to hear about more. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donato. Mr. Sullivan, was, was traffic part of your presentation this evening? Do you have your consultant available that maybe we can quickly segue into a, a very small presentation and then we can return to the board member comments? I want to try to keep the presentation and the comments as separate as we possibly can, just for those at home and, and just for efficiency, given the format.
Sure. This is, this is Matt Price speaking. We had given that portion and we tried to not pull in our entire portion from December, but as I'm speaking here, I'm happy to pull up that portion of the December presentation. Kyle Ham is available to, to go through that. Let me see if I can pull up that piece and then I will.
Yeah, if we could have a brief overview and then if there's any follow-up questions from any of the board members and or the public, then we can go into more detail as that was presented in, in December.
Yep, have to. Giles, I've got this pulled up, so I will turn it over to you.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Giles Ham with the NESTM Associates. So I haven't seen the, the December presentation for a while, but, but we'll walk through this. So we did a very detailed traffic study, working with town staff. We've supplied a November traffic study and then based on peer review comments, we updated that. Actually, it says September, traffic study and updated November. Really a very detailed analysis. We had twelve study area intersections confirmed with town, town staff. And we did traffic counts in March of two thousand nineteen and June and August of last year. We did some supplemental counts as well, based on neighborhood comments along Walnut Street. Next slide. So this is really just the detailed of the trip generation. I would point out that there's a ninety-nine thousand square foot building today. We assumed an office building of two hundred and thirteen thousand square feet. And you can see the net increases between a hundred and seventeen and a hundred and thirty-two peak hour trips. And keep in mind that these are, these are one-hour projections. Morning commuting hour and evening commuting, commuting hour. I would also tell you that these numbers are very conservative because while we assumed an office building, a, a life science building would probably be a third less traffic. So it would be less traffic than we assumed within the study of, of, of the project. Next slide. So just in terms of, um, there's a lot of, kind of we alluded to through the presentation, but a lot of emphasis on, on pedestrian connections through the site with sidewalks and crosswalks. There'll be, in terms of our mitigation measures, we left, I think about ninety-six bicycle racks, as well as a, a sixx station onsite. And then some of the bicycle will be in the garage as well as outside. Working with town staff, we did a very detailed travel demand management plan, which has been approved by town staff. Some of the elements of that would be, on the sidewalk issues, we'll shower in lockers onsite. A bicycle repair station, we'll have a transportation coordinator onsite and we will be joining the, the Transportation Management Association within, within the community. And I think that John talked about a lot of the site design elements that, that are listed there as well. I, I will, maybe I will point out, let's go, let's go to the next slide. I think that'll be helpful. I think John did walk you through these changes. So we had several meetings with town staff in terms of mitigation measures and alternatives to Walnut Street. We met with town staff in November to discuss all these alternatives. And a result of that collaborative meeting, we came up with these changes to improve safety and, and pedestrian conditions along, along Walnut Street with safer crossings, with, with narrower roadways to slow the speed down, which is better for the pedestrians and bicyclists, bicyclists along the corridor. Keep going there, Matt. So yeah, and that's Cypress Street, just kind of realigning that. It's a wide open intersection. So we're closing that up and providing a shorter pedestrian crossing at that location. And then the, the final thing, go to the next one, Matt. So I, I think it's really important and, and a, a lot of work went into this, a, a really significant effort. And the idea being is that we're now going to be able to shift traffic from, from Walnut Street onto Arsenal Street. So I think that's a big change in terms of the potential to reduce traffic on Walnut Street. And again, this is a, a, a signalized location that Town DPW asked us, asked us to do. It's a safer intersection. It's, it's better in terms of traffic operations and pedestrian crossings. And we maintain the cycle track along the corridor there. And it, it looks kind of simple, but this is very complicated. And the significant effort went in between the design team and town staff to, to come up with this plan. It's, it's really a great plan. And I think that's pretty much a good synopsis. Again, detailed peer review, a lot of coordination, a lot of meetings with town staff.
Thank you very much, sir. Member Donato, did you want him to elaborate on anything right now?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. What I'll do now, Member Ferris, do you have any questions or comments regarding this proposal?
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Um, you know, I, my questions relate to, I think, just two of the images. So if we could pull up, initially, just there's an elevation of the, the garage, which is a head-on elevation of the garage, which faces the Birch residences. You know, I, I want to initially though, start out by thanking the applicant and team for such a comprehensive and deliberate and nicely thought-out proposal. You know, also just even referencing the projects which you talked about in terms of architecturally, that, you know, Lynx as well as the Clarks. I know that there's an office tower in Providence that the architectural firm had done a while ago, which has a very nice treatment of a parking garage there. And, you know, I, I would say that if this development, which I assume it will, lives up to those comparisons, that it'll be a very nice development for, for Watertown. So I wanted to just thank you for that. And also thank you for your responsiveness in terms of the, the parking garage component and the appropriate net screening from the, the residences. So my question here is, I may apologize if I've missed it, but as I see the plans and look at this, I understand the top level of parking to be shadow parking. And, and so I'm not quite sure what that means for this proposal. You know, shadow parking, and maybe I misunderstand it, is typically parking that would be used in the future if needed. Yet, this parking canopy is covered with, you know, solar collectors. And so I don't really kind of understand. Is it shadow parking or isn't it?
Sure, I'll respond to that. This is Matt Price with Westbrook. Yeah, so, appreciate the question. And, and really where this solution came from is, is our hope of solving for the situation where the ultimate user of the building needs more parking than traditional lab tenant would. And what we've provided for through the shadow parking, which is both a hundred and two spaces in the garage, as well as the sixty-two spaces on the surface parking. Those additional spaces provide for what we feel is a, a bare minimum parking ratio where where that use, the, the tenant comes along to be a little bit more dense. So what, so it's ultimately kind of a, that type of protection, David? And, and what our hope is, and unfortunately, in light of recent events, we think life sciences is only becoming more important. And we feel comfortable that that lower parking amount, which does not employ the, the additional shadow parking, will be sufficient, given that life science companies are often less dense in terms of their utilization, as you know. But again, so, so the, the shadow parking really provides the opportunity in the future to, to add parking as needed.
So, so in this, so, thank you. So in this case, for the parking garage, for that elevation, then, let me know if I'm misstating this. The elevation as we see it is correct, is as intended to be built. The location of the, the solar panels is as intended to be built. And then the shadow parking is under the solar panels. And so in fact, it would be built, but you're saying it just would not be used?
No, the intention is not to build it. And, and as you know, it'd be very costly to go back and build it after the fact. So the, the, the hope is that as we lease this up, the building is leased up well out of completion. And we have, we know we only need the lower parking amount because we have life science companies that have never built. What we want to avoid is putting the solar on top of a garage and then having to come back, take the solar off and put a new story on with. So we, what this allows for is that ability, but it's not our intent and it would not be economically advantageous to do it. It just buys that time before the, the top level is installed to figure out where that tenant demand is.
Madam Chair, Mike Minna raised his hand.
Yes, I see this, I see this as a, a question, from a question from the audience.
I, I was going to speak to the audience when we get to that stage, but Mike had a question, I think, as well.
Okay, well, let's, let's get through the board member comments and then we can, we can circle back to the staff. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. And maybe I'm just kind of missing, and I'm still not being sure what the answer is. So I guess what I want to know is the solar panels will be built at the elevation that they're shown here. And that is on top of, I, I, I get, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if other members are understanding.
If I may, I, I figured it out, David, because I, I had the same exact question as you. And, and Matt, jump in and cut me off if I have no idea what I'm talking about. But in the top photo and what's up on the screen, the actual top level of the garage is that light blue that extends above the panels, correct?
So that would, and I'll let John clarify if I'm mistaken, but that would be if we added the shadow parking level, where that top level would become.
So the, the, what is actually shown does not include the shadow parking?
Correct, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think I can clarify because I had the same concerns when we met previously with the developer as far as, I think the use of the term of shadow parking is a misnomer. That is not the term that is, would be described and defined in the zoning ordinance. You are right, Member Ferris. And I had the same concern that, you know, if, if, if this is shadow parking, you need in the future, you can't build a garage, have the solar panels on, take solar panels off and build it again. The applicant had indicated, and the applicant maybe can correct me if I'm wrong, but that they will need to know the end user before that garage is built. So that they are not going in with a, with a user that only requires, that doesn't require the top level. And they build it that way. And then a couple of years later, a, an user comes in that needs that level and then would have to build on top of that. So that is not the case. So really, they're, they would have to define the end user before that garage is built.
Thank you, Mike. So, so does that, does that mean that before the garage is built, there may be a determination that the elevation of the solar panels might in fact be one story taller than what's being illustrated?
That, that's correct. And Mike, thanks for jumping in. And I, I believe, I don't have this section, but I believe there's actually a, what we're referring to as a reduction in parking under the actual zoning code. But part of the solution here, David, you'll see it as one of the conditions is a request to delay the installation of the solar for up to a year after certificate of occupancy. So that's in response to what Mike alluded to, that ultimately that decision needs to be made and it's going how many stories the garage will be. And the, the one-year period is while we're leasing up the building, rather than putting the solar on right away, making sure the building's leased, determining the parking requirement before the solar is ultimately put on the final garage.
Madam Chair, this is Gideon Schreiber again. That's correct. There's a, there, there is a condition about the solar energy system. And I think the, the reason, there's the shadow parking and then there's also the reduced parking. And so the, the expectation is that the, once the tenant mix is finalized, the garage will be a final component. But there is also an additional sixty-plus parking spaces within the site, which are truly shadow parking spaces. And so they have asked for both relief of reduced parking and as well as the shadow parking. But the shadow parking is primarily the, the parking lot parking. The garage is a, you know, it's a scenario where it could be reduced. And then finalized. And that's, the solar energy system is part of that.
Thank you. So, you know, I guess, I'm, what I think we're looking at is what potentially might not be built. And what might be built might have a, a one-story taller volume than what, what's, what's being shown. So I, I, you know, I just wanted to clear that up in my own mind too, and, and also for the rest of us. So I think that that's a little bit, you know, a little bit different than what we're looking at and that we're looking at nice drawings and elevations that talk about attempts to kind of buffer the, you know, the, the garage mass. The, we're being shown, gosh, it's like three-quarters of the height of the garage. But in fact, if there's another full story to the garage that, I guess I would expect if there's another full story of the garage, would it be realistic that the buffer planting, that I, I guess the, the green screening would be one story taller? So for me, I think that would be an appropriate compromise versus all of a sudden two stories of exposed parking above, you know, a lower green screening element. So just that is a, that as a point. But I'm, I'm glad I asked a question to confirm that I wasn't misunderstanding the issue. The, the second thing is I do want to just, again, commend on the, the attention to the coloration of the, the concrete. So I think something that's warmer as you're illustrating versus kind of a, a cool, you know, a clear, you know, whiter gray concrete would be more appropriate and, and a nicer neighbor. You know, my other questions now relate to just an overall site plan. If you would bring us to one of those, please. You know, I think the, the way this meeting is being run in terms of our remote, this is all going really well, right?
Wow, so good, David. Don't you think so?
Not good.
I think that this unfortunate scenario makes us all a little bit more kind of appreciative of what we typically have and we're missing. And, you know, it's just the, the fact that people, as you're all doing, can pull this together is, is a nice thing. So thank you. Yeah, I, the, you know, the, the image kind of that I'm seeing kind of middle right would be fine to look at. Great, thank you. So just a, just a couple of questions. I'm assuming that, you know, for the people who live along Birch, all of those fences, I, I was actually driving on the site last night. And so all of those fences are different. So I'm assuming they're all belonging to the individual residences and they're going to remain as is.
That's correct. And we've, we've assumed planting on, on the eighty-five Walnut.
Great.
Side of those fences.
Okay, great, thank you. The next, the next thing is, there was a, a view, it was actually view three, but you don't need to change it right at this moment. It may have just been the rendering, but what I felt on view three, which is a view from, from Walnut, actually, that the, the parking along, I'm sorry, the planting along the sidewalk along Walnut actually looked quite tall. And it looked like it was a visual barrier to prevent you from seeing into the park from Walnut Street. And I would, and, and I would recommend against that. So I think that the, for that layer of planting that was shown in that rendering, you might actually want to page up to view three for a minute to this.
I can speak to this. It's Blair Heinz, the landscape architect. Actually, the renderer had misinterpreted the plan and showed an evergreen, like an arborvitae, where in fact what's proposed are these flowering trees just behind the sidewalk about eight or ten feet. So it's going to be a much lighter, more graceful plant that would not create a kind of a evergreen wall, but rather a much more of a kind of a, it's a very light kind of plant called an animal anchor. Which can kind of half-seethrough and blooms. So good eye, though.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's it.
Okay. Well, that, that's great. Because I, I think what's illustrated here, would I be concerned about the security of the park, you know?
Absolutely.
And I don't think there should be like a barrier as is. Great, thanks.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
If we, if you wouldn't mind, please, just going back to the, the overall site. If we, if you wouldn't mind, please, just going back to the, the overall site plan. I'm sorry about that. I should have asked this question in a different order. Thank you for doing this. It really just is, when we get there, just an understanding of, for the, the trees which are being nicely planted as a buffer, you know, at the, at the corner of the garage. Again, I appreciate the stepped indentation at that bottom left corner of the garage. When I see, when I see kind of mixed in, just, just alongside the garage there, the different colored deciduous tree versus evergreen, I, I think the use of evergreen is great in that throughout the year, the neighbors on Birch will see something that is continually green versus see-through trees that have no leaves. So I think that's a, a nice use for a buffer. I guess I just had a question for those species that are planned there. Do we anticipate that they're going to get fairly tall? I would hope that they would have some good size to them. I'm not talking about the deciduous.
Again, I understand. This is Blair Heinz speaking to that. So the plantings that are directly along the property line are a plant called a green giant western red cedar. It grows very, very rapidly after establishment, which means on year two to three, it'll grow about two to three feet a year. So it'll get some good height. In this air, area, they get to about 40 feet, 45 feet high, which is about the height of the Norway maples that are further up the property line. Let me put my glasses on here. More or less opposite 10 and 12, Birch Road. If you went towards the park, those trees are about 40 to 50 feet tall. So these would be slightly less than that. In addition, we're also planting some white pine trees where there's a little bit more space, because the cedar tree grows fairly narrow. So where we don't have a whole lot of room, that's an appropriate plant. And where we have some more room, we're planting the native white pine.
Great. So in the, in the dashed red rectangle on this image, the, the kind of more blue-green color versus the white-green, those are evergreen trees, and they'll have some good heights in them. Yes.
Yes, exactly. They'd be white pine. I think we might have also had some Norway spruce in there as well. So both plants that grow quickly and, and get large. And they would get taller than the garage in a few, and well, it's probably gonna be about 10, 15 years before they get up to about 40 feet.
Okay, great. And if, again, if you would just step back to the overall site plan, just for my, my last question. So it's, it seems that, you know, when I look behind the yards of number 24, and I guess it's, I can't quite tell if it's 26 or 28, I, I'm assuming that the trees, the deciduous trees are existing.
That's correct.
And, and so I think that, I would suggest that kind of along the property line, behind number 28, the one in between, or 28 or 26, whatever that is, between 24 and 30, that the site plan, would you consider adding one deciduous tree there to just kind of help fill in that, that element as well, or do you think so?
Well, we actually thought about having the deciduous trees on the other side of the driveway. They have a little bit more room to grow there because of the expanded planting areas. And that's the lighter green that you see at the center bottom of the red triangular, and then kind of diagonally to the lower right from there. And so that's, that's, those trees should be able to get some good size because they have some significant amount of rooting space. So we did think about it. We thought that was the best location for them.
All right, great, thanks. So thank you, thank you to the applicant and...
You're welcome.
And Madam Chair, thank you. So I, I think I'm, I'm glad that I asked the question about the idea of shadow parking. So that's, that's a little interesting, that it could potentially be one story taller than illustrated. Thank you.
Before we move on, Mike, I just want to make sure I heard one of the questions correctly. I believe Member Ferris asked if there would be a fence along the, behind the homes on Birch Road on the property line. Was that one of your questions, David?
No, actually, what I was just confirming is that, you know, driving there last night, each yard seems to have its own fence, some of which are in great shape and some not so great. But I was assuming that we were not adding new fencing there. There's a whole new fence along the gables, which is prior to the gables property, I assume. But each individual home would retain their own fence, and this new landscaping will be a buffer to their own personal fencing.
Okay, so there's no new fencing proposed?
Correct.
And, and I just wanted to acknowledge that that was a question from the audience as well, but we would be answering or responding to those during the public hearing step where the public plays in.
Okay, we're, Member Bragwin, any questions or comments regarding this proposal?
You're muted.
Sorry about that. I do have a quick question, and it's in follow-up to David's question about the shadow parking. So I'm looking at the plan from December, and I think the, the updates show that originally the space in that red rectangle in the new plans, that had been an area of shadow parking, but now there's no scenario where that would be parking. That's, is that right?
That's correct. Those parking spaces have been permanently removed to increase the amount of buffering.
So the area directly to the right of that, that on Slide 28 of the current plan says surface parking, but it's, it looks like it's indicated that that's a shadow, currently a shadow parking space. So that, that may or may not be parking, is that right?
Correct. Those were the 62 spaces I alluded to earlier that are on the technical definition of shadow parking, that would initially be a pervious green space with the ability to convert to parking at a later date.
Okay. I think that, I think that answers my question. Thank you for the presentation, and I think it looks good. I think it's well thought out and a lot of community outreach, I think, went into this, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Member Bragwin?
Oh, no, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to member floor, any questions or comments?
So again, thank you. I think I echo everybody when I say it's a very thoughtful proposal. It looks like a lot of work went for it, so thank you again. Again, just echoing the, the comments on the shadow parking for the garage. If you don't have them already, it would just be useful to see what that looks like, both in elevation form, as well as, you know, we have a lot of renders that show it being the limited number of stories. So just thinking about what that looks like, I think it would be helpful to, for you all to share those if you have them. I know that renders are, all take a lot of time, but I think anything that will make us feel a little more comfortable with it would be useful.
What I've put on the screen is the, the site section. So we've tried, what we've tried to do is with that blue line represent, you know, how the garage would change in that additional story scenario. So that's, that's both the blue line in this elevation, which is calling out the, the additional garage story. And what we've tried to highlight there is the difference in elevation because of the topography, how that grade slopes down in the relative height to Walnut Street as you, as you move down. And I would also comment that that first story is partially really tucked under the topography because of the, the change in grade in that elevation.
Is that the only, is that the only elevation you have for it? Do you have any renders or anything else, just giving us a visual understanding?
Let me poke through here. If you don't mind, I'll look through a file to see if I have anything else that wasn't in this presentation that might be representative.
I think that'd be helpful, thank you. And then my, my other question was just about maintenance of the pedestrian area. So, you know, just thinking of whether it's removal of snow in the winter, you know, if we have people that are either walking or biking around the park and the surrounding pathways, just making sure that that's all nice and taken care of. I know I look forward to riding my bike around there and walking.
Yes, that would all be covered under the, under our typical kind of contract services. And we would be maintaining the park area, the entire site, certainly responsible for snow removal and the like.
Great, thank you. No further questions.
Do any of the board members have any follow-up comments based on the, the additional information that we just received? Member Ferris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think it's, it's, it's clear to me that what is making the, the garage appear one story taller is the inclusion of the, of the solar system, which is something that we're, in a sense, requiring. You know, it's the fact that that elevation of that item, that, you know, solar component is illustrated at the lesser usage is, I wish we were seeing it, you know, at the potential fuller usage or acknowledged in some way. But even in the section that we just looked at, you know, that dashed blue line is showing the surface of the parking, but not the elevation of the, the solar. So in, you know, if we didn't have the solar element, which obviously we do, we wouldn't be talking about this as much. But with the solar element, it makes the structure and reality of the structure is in a sense one story taller because of that roof element. So in a sense, our regulations are requiring something that brings out the greater mass, the visible mass. It just would be nice to have it been more clear in this presentation. Thank you.
Sure, and totally understood that. Yeah, if I may, I'd just like to respond. Our, our hope was by rendering the solar canopy, which is equivalent in height to what that additional story would be, it was a proxy for what that additional story would look like. And I think our hope was that that was easier to visualize than to visualize a smaller garage. And we certainly, I would, I guess I would say, going back to our plans here, this building has been designed through and through as a lab building, and the intent is to have that smaller parking. I would say it's a bad day for us if we have an office tenant in here who needs more parking. So we will be doing everything in our power to, you know, to have a lab tenant. And we think that Watertown has certainly strong momentum and has become a great location for life sciences. And, and again, we see that demand further increasing in the coming years, which is why we've proposed it the way we have, rather than just coming right out and asking for a larger garage. Because one, we certainly don't want to incur the additional cost of building it when you don't need it in that lab scenario. So what we're trying to provide for is that flexibility to not have to, to build it, to not have a larger garage than is required. Now, something that was worked through during our community meetings in response to the, the others that were sensitive and were sensitive to them and, and their desire to have a smaller garage. So that's kind of the, the thought behind it. Apologies for not having a rendering with, with the larger image. But again, it was, we were trying to represent what that would be. But I do want to make very clear that that's not our intent, and absolutely we'll be doing everything in our power to keep that garage smaller and have life science tenants in this building.
Matt, before we...
Matt, this is Roy Smith.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Matt, if I could. Go on.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, this is Roy.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Price, related to the garage. And again, I just want to, going back to the image that you showed with the perspective from Walnut Street, the section from Walnut all the way through to Arsenal, with the dashed blue line on top of the garage, the dashed blue line is, is the roof of the top of the additional level? Or where the cars will be parked, and the solar panels will be above that?
That is the, the roof of the additional, or the, where the additional cars would be parked.
So the blue line is not representative of the full projection of the garage, if you have to add the other story?
It does not, the blue line is not representative of the solar. The solar essentially, as built, as our goal, would be where that blue line is. And with the additional story, that blue line would become the top level, and the solar would be above that.
So none of these actually show that top level, fully constructed? None of your perspective, nothing in this package shows that full, full projection?
We do not have an elevation with the fully built garage.
Okay, thank you. I just, I, I just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you. Do you have any additional questions, Member Ferris, before I ask a few, and then we get into the public comment?
Just, you know, it's, thank you, I thank everyone for clarifying the issue. So I, I think maybe that we then might talk about the shadow parking element at grade, and whether that proceeds, what might happen on top of the garage is a condition or something. But if we were to go ahead with this, but just...
Okay. So I had, um, I did have some questions about the garage, and it looks like those have been answered. I did have a question about fencing as well. I was looking at your site plans, the RJ O'Connell plans, and looking at your parking and traffic control plan sheet 4A. And it says existing fence and wall to remain. And that's the portion that's along the gables. And then when we start going along the backyards, it looks like there is some, the combination of retaining wall and some fencing, at least depicted on your site plan. So what are your intentions for that area?
I'm gonna let Blair, I'll let Blair respond. I think my assumptions with the planting that was on our side of the existing fences. But Blair, can you clarify if we're doing, if we're promoting planting as well as...
Yes, again, Blair Heinz, landscape architect. We had presumed that there would be a fence along that area, but we wanted to be flexible, because some of the residents don't have a fence, and if they did not want to have a fence, we wouldn't insist on it. But we, we were presuming that there would be a four or six-foot fence along that edge, and that would be discussed, and, you know, with the various butters.
Okay.
Just to clarify, this is Roy Smith from RJ O'Connell. You are correct that there is some, there's varying fences along that property line, but as you go further down towards Arsenal Street, there's some existing retaining walls as well that are gonna remain.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, sir. My other question was the screening on top of the building. And it almost seems as though if we can put up a, something that shows that, we have some stuff here as well, the board members do, but it, it seems like it's almost taller than one of the stories of the building. And to me, it actually seems unproportioned. So what's the rationale behind that? What exactly is going up on the roof that's so tall that the screen wall, and maybe it's just the way the renderings are done, but if you have an actual, if you, I don't think you've detailed that out in your elevations. Nor do you show it in your perspectives.
No, it's, that's a good comment, and I, I'm happy to clarify. So the, the way that we're, what we're anticipating for is, is a height of 18 feet for that screen wall. And our typical floor-to-floor level for the building is 15 feet. So it's, you know, it's, it's very similar to the floor-to-floor level for a lab building. And the reason why it's 18 feet is just to make sure that, you know, to make sure that, you know, everything is visually screened from the neighborhoods. We've, you know, we've pulled it in several, you know, a column bay around each side to tighten up the plan. But, you know, in our experience with life science buildings, those mechanical penthouses tend to get very tall because of the equipment that needs to, you know, serve the building. So I think, you know, we would, we would aim to get that between 16 to 18 feet to make sure that we can accommodate the equipment, but more so to be sensitive that nothing, you know, that we're eliminating any views of equipment from the surrounding neighbors.
So from, including the four stories in the screen, what are we looking at for total height? 80 feet?
78 feet as drawn, including the screen.
Which I would, I defer to Mike, but the garage, or the garage, the roof screening, there are provisions for that height in the zoning ordinance beyond the building itself. So there are separate provisions in the zoning ordinance.
Right, I'm just trying to understand. We talk about, you know, levels and floors and, you know, it seems like there's stuff beyond here that I just want to make sure that everyone is here. It just caught my eye is kind of out of proportion with the building. It's, what, about a third of the building? Screen wall?
I mean, within a quarter. Within a couple of feet, it's about one level of the building, so it would be about a quarter.
Right, okay.
A hair over.
Okay. I don't have any other questions now. What I'd like to do is move into the public comment portion of the meeting. We do have some comments here that I will address that we received in record, but let's see who's out there that has some questions. Gideon, I'm gonna turn it over. I see we have a couple Q and A down the bottom, and then it looks like one person is, two people are raising their hands, so why don't we go with the Q and A first, Gideon?
I will. And there's actually three questions, but it's all from the same person, Chris Penland, who actually, let me see, he may be one of the people raising their hands as well. Nope. And three, one of them I accidentally answered, but it was just to let him know that we would be answering that as part of this stage. So one question was in regard to the status of fencing running along Birch Road property line and what the plans are. I don't know if you, there's three questions. I can read them all. The second question is about what would happen to the construction of the parking garage if they haven't found all the tenants? They just build for the higher density? And then the third question was about, it's really a maintenance issue about a large branch that fell recently on Birch Road and what you would be doing for pruning existing trees along the property line.
Okay. So it looks like we've answered the question about fencing. I raised that question a couple minutes ago. And that was answered. That will be something that will be included in the conditions, provisions, if we move forward, provisions for fencing, if the property owner would like that behind their home in that section. And then if the applicant could address the question. If you haven't found a tenant before construction of the parking, are you just going to build the upper level anyways? Matt, maybe you can address that.
Certainly happy to.
Thank you.
So that, that would be analysis we would have to run in a year or two. Again, from an economic perspective, that would be a very difficult decision to make to incur those costs when we firmly believe that there's sufficient life science demand. So our hope would be to have enough pre-leasing done to justify the smaller garage portion before having to make that decision, putting the solar on the garage. And what I would add is by having the surface level shadow parking, that gives us some additional comfort that we can employ those Q2 spaces first without having to add the additional garage level, which would absolutely be our preference in adding height and additional cost. So we feel like we have, you know, a third of that additional parking that we're referring to or more than a third is surface parking. So I think that gives us a buffer beyond what we're initially planning that our hope is that that is more insufficient.
Thank you. And the next question, actually, I can see the questions, Gideon, so I can read them, is from Greg, and he's asking, what are the plans for rodent mitigation during construction? And I believe we addressed that in our conditions, Gideon, and require full integrated pest management. Is that not correct?
That is correct, and there's a standard process that the health department is involved with and the building department is. So it's a fairly standard process within town for rodent control, and it's required for all construction projects.
Okay, great. And then I don't think I can unmute people, Gideon. It looks like Abigail Jean has her hand up. She's one of the attendees.
Yeah, Abigail, I've unmuted. I've allowed you to unmute.
Hello. So, sorry, you might hear a child crying in the back. So I just, can you see me and hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
Oh.
Do you have your video off?
No, it's, the attendees are not, they don't have video.
Okay.
But you should identify your name and your address for the record.
Thank you. So my name's Abigail Houghton. I live on Lincoln Street, 61 Lincoln Street. Our street connects to Walnut Street. And I've been watching this process and Westbrook, and I also want to applaud them for taking a lot of the community concerns and adjusting their proposal. It's been really great to watch. I just wanted to be a representative from our community. I know there was a very intense and encompassing traffic study, which was very appreciative. However, for our street, we also had a traffic study done by the city. And that traffic study was pertaining to speed. And it did discover that there was a speeding challenge on our street, especially during the peak rush hour traffic. So just based on looking at that in addition to the study that Westbrook did with, you know, maybe not a huge increase of traffic, but still some. I'm wondering if Westbrook would consider, in addition to some of the really wonderful traffic accommodations that they're doing for the community, if they consider maybe looking at our street for bump outs because we accommodate so much of the traffic going to and from Mount Auburn to Walnut and to the Westbrook new property.
Can somebody from the applicant's team address that question, please?
Sure. So, and Abigail, thank you for the question. This is Matt Price, and I appreciate your question. I know we've met a number of times at community meetings. So I guess my comment would be that as part of our determination of which offsite improvements to make, we held a number of community meetings to put forth options, but also met with town staff, including DPW, who I know DPW has also meant an investigation on Lincoln Street, and that was discussed alongside them. So I think my general comment would be that we're, as part of our process, we explored a number of different options and Walnut Street and the improvements we're making on Arsenal Street, as well as the additional cash contribution contributions we're making were what was recommended to us in concert with all of the studies we did and the feedback. So that's at least where we determined, or it was requested of us to make those improvements. So I would just say I acknowledge the concern and it was considered that the, for our direct impact, Walnut Street was deemed to be the where the improvement was certainly needed most directly and would really defer to the town to advise if there were any further improvements needed on Lincoln Street.
Do you have other questions or comments, ma'am?
No, that was it. I just wanted to address that issue for us.
Okay. On that or in regards to that, I know that there's a very spelled-out mitigation plan that was described to us this evening and submitted for the record. And Matt, you had just mentioned that the town was also looking for some cash contributions, and I would make a suggestion, Abigail, that that's something that you can maybe speak to your district counselor about, and that's something that potentially could be looked at with the use of some of that money. I don't want to earmark any of those funds. The town might already have those set aside for something, but if there is an opportunity to use some of the extra mitigation money, that's something that, you know, potentially could be looked at. Again, I don't have the authority to say where that money is going to be spent, but that's something that could potentially be looked at as part of that extra funds. Okay, moving on. It looks like, Gideon, can you unmute Libby Shaw? Looks like she has her hand up. Hi, Libby.
Hi.
Hi.
So Libby Shaw, 73 Templeton Parkway and representing Trees for Watertown. I just want to once again commend this team for, for a really beautiful job. The maximized greenscape is fantastic as Watertown is losing tree canopy disturbingly rapidly, especially in development projects. It's really nice to see the preservation that's going on and the addition of greenscape going on on this site. I did have one question, though. Matt, I know that this is like the worst-case scenario, but I am concerned about, I think that the surface parking that serves as shadow parking is on that area of the property between the parking garage and Birch Street and therefore all that careful landscaping, all that careful layered landscaping would go away if that shadow parking were used. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I can answer that, Matt.
Sure, go ahead, Blair.
Okay. Libby, Blair Heinz, landscape architect. The expanded area that you see right at the corner of the garage building, that is not part of the shadow parking. The shadow parking really extends beyond that towards the main lab building space. So that's the, that's the area that is also part of the shadow parking. My understanding is that we're keeping that expanded landscape area as present as shown in the plan.
Okay, so we wouldn't lose any of that careful landscaping, layered landscaping, if the shadow parking were used?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that's right.
That's great. That's all, that's all I had.
Thank you so much for participating.
May I also just acknowledge that there has been a few emails from Leo Martin. He asked about lighting and that it would be dark sky compliant, and I let him know by email that it, you know, the town requires full cutoff dark sky compliant pictures. So he was satisfied with that, but I wanted to acknowledge that he had sent that email, and he also asked about the green space over the infiltration area, which would be future, is identified as shadow parking, and he asked about which parts would be plantings versus grass within that shadow parking area. And I told him that the areas that would be plantings are shown as the areas that are not drive areas today. So the shadow parking space is grass, but that could be clarified. And then he also asked about the sequencing of the shadow spaces versus the garage. I mean, I thought that that should definitely be clarified in the condition.
Those are excellent questions. Matt, can you, I mean, based on what you had said this evening, and correct me if I'm wrong, but your preference would be to construct the surface spaces before you engaged in the upper level of the garage. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. And if you could, if you're watching from home, Mr. Martin, their preference is to build the surface spaces first, and then it would be the garage. And if you, if you have any follow-up questions based on those responses, you can, you can reach out. Were there any other emails, Gideon? Because I see that it looks like Libby may have her hand up again, and then there's two other hands up as well.
Yes, I would suggest, there's no other emails at this time. I would suggest answering the next in line and then going back to Libby after answering the other two.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Dan Campagna?
This is Dan Campagna, 147 Lexington Street, Vice President of Carpenters Union 339. I just wanted to take a minute to commend Matt Price, Westbrook Carpenters, for their efforts to help with the responsible contractors. I wanted to recognize the whole team there for for taking the time to address the concerns of the community. I thought they were very thoughtful and they should be recognized for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Did you have any other comments or questions?
That is all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. It looks like we have Paula.
Hello, I'm helping. I live at 86 Walnut Street. And I have two questions. First of all, I'd like to ask about the public access to the park and also the pedestrian walkway. The walkway, as I understand the design, goes down the west side of the parking garage and then continues between the parking garage and the actual office building and then out to Arsenal Street. And I'm wondering if people in the neighborhood will actually be able to use that during the workday. It doesn't, from the drawings, it didn't look like really wide sidewalk to me along the garage there. And I'm just wondering about that, and also will this park be considered a public park?
Thank you for your questions, Paula. Matt, can you address those, please, or someone from your team?
Yes, happy to. Hi, Paula, how are you? So I'm just putting the circulation plan up on the screen here for reference. So I will address the second question, whether the park will be public. It's 100% intended to be a public park. We, I think from the beginning, and hopefully you appreciate that from our earliest community meetings a long time ago now, that we felt like it was important for this to be a buffer and a nice transition area. So that I believe would be, this will be private property maintained by us as owner, but with appropriate easements and access rights for the public, and it's our hope that it's used both by occupants of the building as well as the public. And then as far as circulation goes, I will let Roy and/or Blair speak to any of the whiz, but we've tried to work hard to find ADA accessible pathways from Walnut Street to Arsenal Street to create connectivity, both through our site as well as a connector to the abutting property, Gables, where there's, there's an existing ADA ramp off of Birch Road and a pedestrian, we've discussed with Gables, a pedestrian easement. we've discussed with Gables, a pedestrian easement to allow not only the community to reach Arsenal Street through our site, but also if they, for whatever reason, if they're going to Watertown Square, they could head that direction and walk on, walk along or bike along the Gables property. So and as far as the width goes, it's our intention, you know, we will be meeting code requirements and the width of the sidewalk would be sufficient for both the community and occupants of the building to traverse along the garage and the sidewalk. So in summary, the intent is absolutely for members of the community to be able to walk from Walnut Street through our site to Arsenal Street.
So, is there, can I go ahead?
I was just going to answer the question about how wide the sidewalk is. So the walks within the Walnut Street Park are five feet wide and the walkway that's adjacent to the garage is five feet wide. The walkway along the lab building space is wider. I think it's, it varies, but I think it's at least eight feet wide. And then I think the last leg of the walkway, as it goes along the easement, where it's labeled private drive is down to five feet again.
Um, I don't know if this is, would be considered possible, but see the blue line that continues in front of the lab building, is there any chance that that blue line can extend out to Arsenal Street so that walking through does not involve walking through part of the parking lot? The new, I don't know exactly what to call it, but the new driveway there will involve crossing several lanes of traffic?
Yes, so.
This is Blair. Go ahead.
I was going to say, Blair, the orange line is intended to be pedestrian circulation. So there are pedestrian pathways through the park. The blue is vehicular and bike.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So just change what I said from the blue line to the orange line. Could the orange line somewhere go along the line of the lab building out to Arsenal Street?
So we've tried.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we've tried to create areas, safe areas and logical areas that are well marked to create those crossings. So you have one at the, I guess, what is the northwest corner of the garage, and then again at the building, and then across the, so there's really three at the entrance of the building. And each of those areas is well marked. We've tried to put them in areas with good lines of sight. And this was the best we were able to do to, we think for the vast majority of this walk, other than those three crossings, you're in a protected and nice environment.
Yeah, Matt, if I could expand upon that a little bit to try and answer Paula's question, we do not, 101 does not control the, I guess, if you're looking at the plan, the right side of the plan, it's kind of the whiteout area where it's where the gray line meets the white line. That is a different property owner. So we cannot provide access, either vehicular or pedestrian access through that property. Our easements on 101 and their frontage on Arsenal Street is at the signal, at the closed signal. Hence the reason why the sidewalk and the access takes jog, a ninety degree jog, and then goes out to Arsenal Street.
Okay, all right. I understand that because I've lived here for a long time. I understand that. Okay. So my other question.
Yeah.
Paul, the building could stop. Paul, go ahead.
Okay. So my other question was about Walnut Street, traffic mitigation, or I'm really going to ask about bike lanes. Is there any discussion on the table currently to create one or two bike lanes on Walnut Street?
I don't believe so.
Thanks Paula. So going back to my comment on exploring a number of off-site mitigation measures, bicycle lanes were one of those many items we explored. And we studied having shared lanes or sharrows as well as a dedicated lane on either side, either or both. And what we worked through with CPW, and I believe you were at both the second community meeting as well, when we presented those, our findings were really that, given the existing width of Walnut Street, it's difficult to safely add either of those measures, particularly without, there's bike, or as you know, car parking on both sides of the road on Walnut Street. So at a minimum, it would require getting rid of that, that street parking. And then again, also have a less than desirable width for the bike lanes and the vehicle lanes. So again, we did explore that. It's something we looked at and discussed, understanding that was a request, but ultimately in communication with everyone, that wasn't one of the measures that was determined to be most appropriate.
Okay. Well, I, as a relevant street resident, am very happy to hear that because many of us use on-street parking year-round, including during the winter parking day. So great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or comments, Paula?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining us. And then, Gideon, it looks like Libby has her hand up again, if we want to circle back.
Yeah, Libby has her hand up, but I'm not sure if it's because I forgot to lower it and she didn't lower it. And we also got one, we received one more question, on question and answer. So can I read that out first and then we can go to Libby?
Sure.
And this question obviously is, might be up in the air, but the question is also again from Chris Penlin, "But is the current expected start time for demo, how is COVID impacting start of the project?"
Great question. So as far as demolition, there's still some work to be done in terms of working with John and his team on the demolition plans. So there's several months ahead to put those plans together and put those before the town to get approval. So we've got some work to do there. So it's kind of a later this year timeframe before we can put those plans together and realistically be in a position to commence. As far as COVID-19 goes, we're certainly working through it live throughout our portfolio. As I alluded to earlier, life sciences is one of the areas where we feel like there's continued interest and as we've been looking into it, perhaps an increased interest in that space. So I think we're optimistic that this is, this is a good product choice at this time, however unfortunate time it is.
And so, Libby Shaw, you're not muted now if you have a question?
Actually, no, I didn't. Thanks, Gideon.
Okay, now you are.
It looks like we have one more question from, if we want to unmute him. And just again, all the speakers, if you can identify your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Greg Pugh and I'm a resident at 190 School Street. And my question is, I see in the presentation, there's a lot of talk on traffic in regards to Arsenal Street and Walnut Street. And as you know, Arsenal Street is becoming a very busy place to be with the new Arsenal yards and now this particular building and so forth. Was there any, was there any studies or was there any talk about the upper part of School Street in your traffic studies, particularly from Mount Auburn Street down to Walnut Street? Taking into consideration traffic coming from Belmont, traffic coming from Cambridge might use that section of the road to get to this building?
Matt, do you want to have your traffic guy just quickly go over what their study intersections and?
Yeah, I'm happy to. And I think what I would.
Looks like some of the intersections on School Street were included.
Correct. And I'll pull that up so everyone can see. And I'll have Giles, if you may, just speak to how those intersections evaluate traffic coming through School Street.
Again, Giles PM with the Nessman Associates. So again, we looked at a very detailed study with town staff. We're estimating about 10% of the traffic would travel up to School Street to the north, and that correlates to about, maybe in the order of, you know, 20 vehicle trips an hour, or so one vehicle every three minutes. So we didn't study up at Mount Auburn Street and School Street, but I would tell you that that's been studied as part of many traffic sites that have been done for the town. So if it's part of this study, it was not required us to look at that northern section.
So you did analyze, Giles, just to recap, Walnut and Dexter and then in School and then Cypress and School, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you have any follow-up questions in regards to that, sir, calling in?
No, I do not.
Okay. Okay, it doesn't look like we have any other questions regarding this proposal. Do any of the board members have any other questions? If you want to just physically raise your hand, I can recognize you. Doesn't look like, okay. So it looks like the board members don't have any other further questions at this time. Do any of the staff members have any follow-up questions or comments that they'd like to make? Okay, looks like that's a no too. Okay, so I'm going to close my participants box. Does the applicant want to add anything else?
I would just conclude with really thanking everyone both for this evening, but also board members, town staff, the community members in particular. We had a long process. I'm not sure how much beyond a year it's been, but it's been a lot of time and, you know, a number of those, Paula and Abigail, were at both community meetings for sure. So we appreciate their participation. And my hope is that we've expressed to you or been able to show that we've tried to be responsive and how the project has evolved. All of that participation was very helpful in how the design took shape. So the participation is appreciated and we appreciate everyone's comments and thoughts and support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Okay. What I'd like to do now is, are there any requests from any of the board members to the applicant for any kind of additional materials at this point? I don't want to close the public hearing portion of the meeting and start deliberating if any of the board members would like to see any additional information before we move forward. Is there anybody that needs to see anything else at this point? Okay, that's a no. Okay. So I do want to do a few things before I move into sort of that mode. I do want to recognize, we did have some comments. We had a letter from Leo Martin, who is the Chair of the Watertown Conservation Commission. He also called in this evening with a question. And he had written to the planning board just noting that he was very happy with the amount of vegetation and the landscaping plan here proposed as part of this project. We also have our letter from David Gamble. He has gone over this building and this conforms to Watertown's design guidelines. I won't read the entire letter. We had a question, a comment, excuse me, written in from Jason. He's a resident on Lincoln Street. Our street has been plagued by speeding, cut-through traffic during rush hour, a regular source of complaints to my town. My neighbors and I have been pleading for traffic calming measures. We are concerned about the expanded footprint of Doble will lead to additional traffic. Personally, I'm really supportive of the more efficient use of land. The current Doble traffic plan includes curb bump outs on Walnut Street, but nothing on Lincoln. Can this be included? So this looks like a similar comment from Abigail that had called in regarding some mitigation and traffic calming on Lincoln Street. And similar to my comments earlier, I think that's something that these residents should continue to pursue through their district counselor and continue to advocate for additional studies and/or physical improvements in that corridor.
Madam Chair, I do, I do want to lay in on the, the town did do traffic council there and did not believe that additional traffic calming was necessary or appropriate for that corridor. So I just, I do want to acknowledge that there was work done on that by the town of Watertown and there is not support for it at the town level at this time. But there could be some traffic calming in the future that could be discussed.
Okay, thank you, Gideon. That was from Matt Price. We don't have to read that one. And then we received comments recently from Hannah and Patrick at 87 Spruce Street. They had written a letter to Mr. McGoon, our director. And he, they had two points that they wanted to bring up. I'll read from the letter. "As part of going over the plans with us, Gideon noticed that the building will have substantial rooftop equipment, outdoor equipment. As it's a lab biotech space with special requirements, on a recent walk past the existing lab biotech building, we were struck by how loud the outdoor equipment is and how much louder it is than other buildings around. Eighty-five Walnuts in a valley which carries sound to extraordinary degrees. Traffic noises are easily audible over a mile away. What measures will be taken to reduce the noise of the outdoor equipment on this development?" So we had a little bit of a presentation regarding the screening, and I believe the conditions include not only visual screening, but sound attenuation screening as well. We do have a local noise ordinance and the applicant will be required to comply with that. And when we get into deliberating this matter further and discussing our conditions, maybe we can look at that and make sure that that language is tight enough and to ensure that if there is some kind of noise traveling, that that can be, maybe some noise reading can be taken or something like that. I think that sometimes noise occurs in locations that you wouldn't think would hear things, but we just want to make sure that the screening, both visual and sound, is covering everybody. Her second comment, "We're really pleased that there'll be additional crosswalks for Walnut Street, including bump outs and at least one crossing with flashing warning lights. The relevant stretch of Walnut, however, has a lot of on-street resident parking, which does not always adhere to the rules. There is always, almost always at least one car parked across the street, excuse me, across the sidewalk. And sometimes cars parked in the street very near, within two feet of the existing crosswalk. What measures will the town put in place to improve enforcement of parking rules?" So that isn't for the applicant, that's for the town. If people are parking in violation of crosswalks or in violation of intersections, just like always, I advise any resident to reach out to the police department and to request enforcement that way. This town cannot, excuse me, this board cannot enforce that and that's not something related to the applicant. So it looks like we've covered all of the public comments that have come in. What I'd like to do now is I would like to close the public hearings for both 85 Walnut Street and 101 Walnut Street, reminding everybody that we do have two separate decisions here, applications and hopefully decisions. And going over what we have here, in our packet, we have a staff report. I will address 101 Walnut Street first, which again is the revisions to that existing site to allow for the driveway connection and the exit out onto Arsenal Street by this building. The planning board met and discussed this on December 11th and they forwarded over their staff report to us. The planning board met and discussed this on December 11th, and they forwarded over their staff report to us. And this is a it's a thinner staff report, again, because it's just for the the access there. And just references the control plans. And then where all the good stuff is, is in 85 Walnut Street. And again, this is a special permit with site plan review for new construction, office, lab, or R and D, side yard setbacks, increased height, shadow and reduced parking, and the increased build-to line. This matter was in front of the planning board, and they forwarded their recommendation as a result from their meeting on December 11th. So going through this, and I would like the board to shift their focus on the conditions. There's the several conditions here that have been drafted by the staff. Some of these things and documents have probably been updated. I do have a quick question for the applicant. All of the materials that you showed, all your renderings and and things this evening, are those all reflected in your updated site plans and landscaping plans? I know that's the presentation portion of it, but have you fully updated all of your control docs to date?
Yes, we have. In the letter, I believe it was in in March, that was submitted to to the board with the update. There was an Exhibit A, which included any updates to the control plans, which ultimately reflected the additional, the removal of the surface parking and the additional landscaping in that area. So everything is reflected in those updated plans as needed.
Okay, I see some of the pages were updated in somewhere, and so I just wanted to make sure that the ones that, you know, the things that we had discussed have have been updated. So going through the conditions, I had made some notes based on this and what my fellow board members had had discussed this evening and some of the things that come up. And I'd like to draw people's attention to condition number 13. And as Chair, and I don't know how my fellow board members feel, I'd like that condition to be modified so that all of the screens that are going up the garage are doubles. The the two single sections just seem sort of minimizing, in my opinion. And frankly, we don't have the full the full view here because the elevations and perspectives are taken off of the smaller garage, which I really hope and pray is what what is constructed. But I would like for some uniformity, and there's no harm in adding additional landscaping. So I would propose that condition 13 be amended to include all double screens. Do any of the board members have any objections to that? No, okay, great. The board members are shaking their heads, no, just for the for the verbal record. Looking at condition 18, which talks about screening, and that I want to make sure that the conditions related to screening are are both for noise and for visual. And that if there is noise that's traveling to portions of Walnut Street, and there are concerns that there is an ability to do sound readings and ability to test conformance with our ordinance at the applicant's expense, and then things will be revised accordingly. So I would like for that to be implemented into condition number 18. Is the staff comfortable drafting that language?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do want to point to condition 20, which was specifically in regard to the lab and R and D use. So perhaps that that it's condition 20D, which speaks to sound and rooftop HVAC. So I wouldn't want those to be repetitive or incorrect. So perhaps we would strike D and move it up to the screening area and talk about the sound attenuation for the site HVAC equipment and other equipment as necessary as you're suggesting.
Yeah, I think that's something that I think that that's something that we, you know, you can, however you feel appropriate, Gideon, either combine them or create a separate condition. I want to make sure that it's a visual screen, and as it says, hear sound attenuation, and that there's the ability to to monitor that if needed. Sometimes those things need a second look. Sometimes they need to be adjusted in the field based on the actual field conditions in the context of the neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that from my perspective, there's going to be a lot of stuff up there. You don't put up a 15, 18-foot screen wall because it's not loading up your roof. So let's make sure we get that one correct for the neighborhood. The other notes I had was about lighting, and I think that that was answered or at least discussed a little bit. So just to recap, the building, and I noticed this the more and more I drive around, that buildings are just lit up all night long. And given given the neighborhood and given the size of the windows, again, it's a beautiful building, but we don't want this to be, you know, a Christmas display all year. So I would like to propose a condition that after the close of business, that the lighting, the internal lighting to the building is reduced to security levels, primarily in response to Member Donato's initial comments. The other condition I'm proposing is that a four-to-six-foot fence is installed, a solid fence is installed along the common property boundary behind the homes on Birch Road. I actually feel those six may be more appropriate, but some people don't like six. They think it's a little bit too high. So work with those neighbors there, see what people can come to agreement on. Hopefully, it's a uniform, actually, it should be a uniform fence, but something of quality, which I know it will be, and something that will blend nice with the landscaping, a solid fence along that area.
Madam Chair, on condition number 21, I I realized that we hadn't corrected this. It has a reference to a minimum of a 30-foot wide easement. And in review with DPW and the petitioner, they wanted to clarify that that one of those easements would actually be matching an adjacent easement, and it would be 15 feet. So I would suggest that it be a minimum as as required by DPW of, so some some easements may be wider than others, but this in this instance would be a 15-foot wide easement, is my recollection. Matt, is Price is still on the line. Can you please confirm that? That that was the condition 21?
Yes, that's confirmed. 15 feet is what's shown in our our plans and what was discussed with DPW.
So that was a typo on staff's part, so we would change that from 30 feet to 15 feet.
Yeah, so just make those revisions, Gideon, and, you know, as is shown in the plan. And Mike, I see your hand, give me one second. Are there any other items that the board thinks that we need to address? I am leaning towards the availability to see some kind of rendering before the top level of the garage goes on. And my primary concern being is, do we need to address additional landscaping and at that point? Member Ferris, please.
Madam Chair, I would agree with that. Yeah, I wonder if we might, you know, first of all, for the application, there's been such great attention to providing green space that will benefit all of the neighborhood. The applicant could have taken a different approach and done less green space and a longer floor plate of a garage, and I'm glad that's not happening. Yes, so the condition I would suggest might be that any shadow parking, if initiated, needs to take place, first of all, on grade. And then, should they decide that they actually need to do another level of parking at the garage, that they would come in front of the board again to illustrate what that additional level would actually look like and how it would be treated.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, I think that's I think that's an excellent condition. Is that something that you can draft, Gideon, based on Member Ferris's comments?
Yes, and I'm actually re-reviewing the shadow parking component, so I would add that to condition number 23. And then we would ensure that the shadow parking be instituted at the grade level first. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, let's add that into add that into condition 23.
Why is she talking?
I will recognize you in one second, Matt. Mike, you had your hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair and Board, thank you. I would just like some clarification maybe by the applicant related to the lights being turned off at close of business. I know a lot of times with these labs and even if it's office, it's kind of more dot-com type uses, will work well into the night. So I'd like to maybe have the applicant clarify, and so we can help clarify the condition and also the public expectation of what that means of close of business and at night and what they should expect with the lights.
It's a good question. I think the proposed language regarding security is reasonable and appropriate as it relates to business hours. I think that's something we would need to, until we're in conversations with tenants, I think we would expect most to be in typical business hours, particularly in the life science space. But hard to speculate until those conversations.
Motion detectors.
And, yeah, and I would say, as it relates to security, those lights would only be on in the spaces. As Bill just alluded to, if we have motion detectors, those lights would only be on in spaces where we have people in the building.
So would you anticipate people working there, you know, eight, nine, 10 at night, Matt? Or are you thinking it's going to be, you know, I mean, I think if it goes till, you know, eight o'clock, nine at night, that's fine. But, you know, once people start winding down, 10 o'clock, I just don't want any kind of spillage and that type of stuff where, you know, it just takes a glare in one window to kind of ruin someone's evening.
Yeah, understood. And that's, again, it's a delicate balance. I think a typical tenant expectation is that they're renting a space and they have access to that space whenever they need to get into their place of business. My expectation for a life science tenant wouldn't be that they're working all hours of the evening. Mike's rightly alluding to sometimes programmers or will kind of work in sprints, and they'll work nonstop for strange hours. Life sciences, I think what we've seen is it's typically more regulated business hours. But again, I'm hesitant to speculate entirely, as every business is a little bit different.
And Madam Chair, I think it's very important to add to that condition about occupancy sensors and motion detection. That's very common practice, as John Sullivan had mentioned earlier. And I think it's, you know, it's it's good to have that in there. The project is going for a lead old, and part of that would be lighting management in a substantial way.
Okay, well, does the board want to put a cap on when they have to transition over, or does the board just want to?
No.
Member Ferris?
Madam Chair, I guess I just suggest that, you know, the reality is, if lighting does become an issue, if the tenant needs to be there, there's always the potential of a window treatment on the inside to to prevent light spillage. So, you know, a window, a perforated window shade, which might be used anyhow for for solar during the day, might also be a good element to require, if needed, to control light spillage that might disrupt a neighbor.
Okay, okay. So why don't we include something like that? And, you know, if you get a group that says they're going to work, you know, 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., then it's time to, you know, fit up their space with some nice shades, I guess. But I appreciate that, that's a good compromise instead of restricting restricting the hours on the site. Okay, are there any other questions or comments by any of the board members?
No.
Okay, what I'd like to do again is just draw the board's attention. Separate public hearings here, so we need two separate motions. And if there's no other questions or comments or revisions to the conditions, I'd like to entertain some motions, please.
Madam Chair, I'll motion to approve the 101 Walnut Street application as discussed and as conditioned.
There's been a motion made for approval of 101 Walnut Street again, which is the modifications to the driveways. There a second? There's been a motion made and seconded, approval by roll call, Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Floa?
Aye.
And aye for Member Santucci-Razi. There a second motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit application for 85 Walnut Street with the conditions as discussed.
There's been a motion made for approval with the conditions as discussed this evening. There a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor by roll call, Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Floa?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, Member Santucci-Razi. Okay, I want to thank everybody for their time and their patience and the presentation and the diligence that went into this project. And we look forward to you building it out without the upper level of the garage.
Madam Chair, I think I think Matt from the applicant looks like he might have a, Gideon, can we? Can we allow him?
Do you mind if I? Apology, I was raising my hand earlier on two of the conditions, if that's okay, just to clarify for the record. Is that okay?
We voted already, but go ahead.
In the plans, again, sorry, I was raising my hand to try and call it out. Just the shadow parking, given that we've reduced those spaces permanently. In, I believe it's number 21, it references 66 spaces. There's now four spaces that have been permanently reduced. So that reference to 66 should be reduced to 62. The other four don't no longer exist.
To 62.
And that's reflected in the plan.
Can you double check the plans and and correct that number, please?
Yeah, we'll verify that as part of the final decision and make sure that the number still references the correct thing. We'll also update the control plans to reference that updated control plans.
What was the other comment, Mr. Price?
It was just a clarification on the additional condition regarding the fence, which we're totally fine with. The clarification is, if there's not a consensus amongst the residents as it relates to whether everyone wants a fence and the type of fence, how we, if that language would be included in the condition or if that would be handled with the board or with town staff.
I think that can be handled with town staff. I think if you pick something tasteful and people are complaining about it, then that's just going to be really unfortunate. I might, I'm not concerned about what you'll be offering them. If, you know, if if I would, I would just pick out something very tasteful and and hopefully that's something that pans out.
That's part of our standard decision, that it would be with review and approval by Department of Community Development and Planning.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications? Okay, what I'd like to do now, I'm sorry, but I need to take a two-minute break, actually, a four-minute break. And then we will reconvene, and we will be discussing 215, 217 Orchard Street. So I see you there, sir, unmuted. You're going to be up next, if we can just take a very short break. Thank you. Okay, it looks like all the board members are back. There she is. And is the applicant for 215, 217 Orchard available? Before we open that up, I want to, I want to just quickly discuss with the board members. I'd like to end the meeting at 11:00 p.m. It's, you know, it's, the first meeting was, took some time, but I really just don't want to be here till till very late in the evening. And we have three cases left. I don't know how the board members feel about, we have 215, 217 Orchard. We will get to that case, they're up next. Then we have 735 Mount Auburn Street. I personally think that one's going to take some time. And then we have 18 to 20 Porter Street. So I just want to check. So I just want to check in with the board. I am gonna shut the meeting down at 11 o'clock. Do we want to open up 735 and start that and then continue it with the chance that we might not get to 1820 Porter Street? How do the board members feel? Does anyone have an opinion or? Turn your microphone on, Chris. Thank you.
How's that?
We can hear you now.
I guess taking them out of order and doing Porter Street before Mount Auburn Street, but that's just me.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think Mount Auburn's gonna take some time. There was quite a few questions. I know I had some questions and comments and really want to make sure that that is dealt with appropriately. So do any of the board members have any opposition to that? Okay, so let's get into 215-217 Orchard Street. And for those that are watching or listening, then we're going to take 18 to 20 Porter Street. And depending on what time it is, we may or may not open 735 Mount Auburn. But I know we won't finish that this evening, most likely. So David, if, Member Ferris, if you could read the legal notice for 215-217 Orchard. And then we see you there, sir. Mister Jaijan, how do you pronounce your name?
Sadar Jahan.
We see you there, so get ready for your presentation, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 215-217 Orchard Street, Sadar Jahan, 217 Orchard Street, Watertown, Mass. 02472. Request the Zoning Board of Appeals grant a special permit finding in accordance with Watertown Zoning Ordinance Section 4.06A, alterations to non-conforming setback, rear setback. To construct a one-story addition, decrease the rear yard setback from 12.4 feet to 7.5 feet, where 20 feet is required. This is located in the T2 family zoning district. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferris. Okay, sir, why don't you tell us who you are and what you did and we'll go from there.
Okay, good evening. My name is Sadar Jahan. I'm the owner of 215-217 Orchard Street. I am building one-story, an addition. Which I want a storage or a mudroom usage. It's non-heated. This house, this dwelling was built 1925 with a setback. The existing setback was a 12 feet, 12 and a half feet. And now my addition is, it's setting, it's on non-conformance further in seven, seven and a half feet. This house is, is property line is on the setback, is secured. It's 50 feet away from the Orchard Street, which is, I have, this dwelling is a share easement with the 221, 221 Orchard Street dwelling, which we share the easement. Now, I am facing all these special for non-conforming. Just the addition is a one-story house, is a 14 by nine feet further and it's set on the back of the house. It's non-diplamental to the public. And I hope that this presentation and to be approved by your members.
Does that conclude your presentation, sir?
That's my presentation, actually, you know, I don't have any further to say, you know, except like, I'm not meeting the condition of non-conforming setback of my addition of the mudhouse. And which is, my property is, 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 is the secure, the secure line of the property. It's, which is the house was built in, was a 12 and a half feet as a grandfather from existing.
Yep, we can see that here on the survey plan, sir. And then you brought the porch down to seven and a half, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, let's see if any of the board members have any questions or comments. Why don't we start with Member Flo?
I have no questions at this time.
And actually, before we move on, I just want to note, the voting alternate on this case will be Member Bragwin on Orchard Street. Member Donato, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a quick, quick question. It looks like the window that was inserted in the addition is gonna match the existing windows. Is that, is that the case?
It is matching the existing, which is a smaller version of the windows, yes.
Okay, I, no further questions at this time, Madam Chair. Member Ferris?
Yes, Madam Chair, just one question. It's just the intent for the siding materials, if it's gonna be a match to the house?
Actually, I am looking into finding another permit. I want to redecorate this whole house with siding. It's gonna be match altogether, yes.
Thank you.
Member Heath?
No questions or comments from me.
Member Bragwin?
One, one quick question. The lot line in question, sir, I guess it's your rear lot line. It's kind of an odd lot, but it looks like, is there trees all along that lot line?
There is a trees, yes. Between me and my neighbor, there's a couple trees, which is gonna be remained.
So they won't, they won't be able to see this new addition from their, from their house on that side?
Will be partially seen. We see each other every day, so it's not, nothing that changed, you know, the condition of the, you know, oversee this dwelling or this addition.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any other questions either, sir. I just want to remind you that, you know, you really gotta, this is, this is something very small and modest and, you know, you started the work without the relief, but we just want to remind you that you, please, you need to follow the rules. You need to obtain permits. And if you ever have any questions, just please reach out to the staff here at Town Hall. They're here to help you. Because I can tell you this, if this thing was any bigger or any kind of other extensive addition, I don't think that you would, you would result in any kind of favorable vote, sir. So please, you said you were gonna do some other work, get permits, and please, follow the rules.
Just so that I have, this is my first time doing this. I'm really, I'm not doing any further, just like, this is our second addition to the house. I'm not doing any further work onto this house.
Okay, just make sure you pull permits, sir, and that you, that you ask questions if you're not sure what the, what the rules are.
Thank you. The town, the town inspectors and board members zoning of the board have been helpful and they've been helping me a lot. Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, so it doesn't look, it looks like we've got still five attendees hanging in there. Doesn't look like anyone has their hand up. I will check with Gideon, did we have any email questions?
There's not been any additional email questions.
Okay, and no Q and A questions. So it looks like we have no public comment. Nothing's been submitted to the record that has been shared with us. So with that, we'll close the public hearing if there's no other questions from any of the board members. Okay, seeing none. Looks like there was a question about the materials matching. That's always one of our standard conditions. It seems like the homeowner is going to be redoing the structure. Is that correct, sir? You're gonna re-site it or re-shingle the house?
Gonna re-site the whole house because when I built my first addition, I put a different material and I'm gonna do the whole house with the same material I have purchased.
Okay, so we'll include that in the conditions that all the exterior materials need to, need to match.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, with that, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve 215-217 Orchard Street with the conditions as discussed.
There's been a motion made for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. All in favor, Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Heath?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
And an aye for the Chair Santucci-Razi. Thank you so much for your time tonight, sir, and thank you for
Thank you very much.
And waiting. Okay. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to jump to Porter Street, 18 to 20 Porter Street. I see the applicant, there she is, hi. Um, so I will just go to my notes here. So the last time we heard this case was in February. We had asked the applicant to revise her materials for consistency and uniformity in regards to the driveway extension. Member Bragwin cannot participate, he missed testimony. And Member Ferris also cannot participate. So Member Flo will be the voting and participating member along with Member Donato, a member Heath, and myself in this particular case. So just so the applicant's aware, you're down to four board members and you need all four to vote favorably on your project. So if you wouldn't mind, Olga, if you could just update us on the revised drawings that you had submitted, please?
Sure, I'm gonna try to share my screen right now.
Okay.
So, good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's safe and healthy so far. My name is Olga, I'm Managing Partner of Remo Partners, and I'll be representing my company in this hearing. As you can see, an agenda, we've been asking to extend existing non-conforming driveway and adding a parking. So we have updated the plans, their request. In the previous meetings, we have addressed most of the concerns of the board. And here today, we are hoping to finish the process. So let's take a look again at the plans. We made sure that the measurements, all there, the setbacks from the sides. So we can see setbacks. Do you want me to make it bigger? Is it okay for everybody?
No, that's actually very clear. That's very clear, ma'am.
So you can see here, it's 2.6 and it's getting narrower too. And at the end here, it was a one little one. 1.6, right on the edge. It's right in the corner, you can see it right here. So the setback from the rear end, it's 10 feet. And from the neighbor on the right is four feet from each corner. Have four feet, four feet. So I think that was the main, major concern on the previous plans. It was not clear, so we made sure that it's there. As well as we have included on the plans, the, the coverage, existing building coverage proposed in previous coverage, proposed in previous coverage and what's, you know, proposed open space. So it's all here as well. The, one of the major, major questions and concerns, it was turning radiuses. So as you remember, we had initially different setup for the parking and we have eliminated one of the parking spots. So that allows us to have an easier maneuverability on the parking lot. And the radiuses were included by the Land Surveyor while he was finishing the plans for the board meeting.
Okay, great.
The radius. We have marked the, the end of the parking lot. We're planning to put in concrete curbstone to make sure that the future homeowners are not parking beyond this line. So this is gonna be, that, that will, they will stop, the curbstones will stop all the parking right there. And so another question was that the space where the parking is will be finished within previous favors with some water issue, so that drains properly. And the calculations that already mentioned also reflect that. We have, also have taken in consideration the feedback from neighbors in terms of the, you know, taking space for parking. And if you remember, a couple neighbors came down and said that, you know, it's quite a bit of green space to use for parking. So we hired a landscape architect that proposed and gave us nice planning, which is reflected in this plan and it's the same plan on the Land Surveyor. So they're kind of matching each other. This is just more color. Just see. So, yeah, hopefully introducing a lot of planting in front and the back of the property will balance the space and make it more pleasant for the, not only for the owners of the property, but also obviously for the neighborhood. We will have a fence, privacy fence along the line on the right side and in the back. And we will have a fence starting from the corner of the, it's farther, it's more like from the corner of the deck to the end of the, to the end of the property line. So, and another last note, per your suggestion, Madam Chair, last meeting, we have separated the walkway to the deck and the parking with a green space. So this is what you see here on the Land Surveyor plan. And this is the way it looks like on the plan from the landscape architect.
Great, great, thank you.
So that's all I have right now.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions? Member Heath's shaking his head no. Member Ferris, do you have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I think, I believe I'm not participating in this.
Oh, oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
It's okay, thank you.
I can, I can only see two faces right now, so hold on, let me change my view.
Thank you.
There we go. Member Donato, did you have any questions or comments? Okay, and Member Flo?
No questions, just thank you again for all the changes that you've done. I know we've asked you many questions in the past and I really appreciate you putting everything in the plan now. That's it.
Thank you. And I, again, I want to echo those comments of my fellow board members. The plan looks great, everything is consistent. I have one question for the applicant, can you? We did recently receive a comment from Ann Carboni Patty, who is the daughter of Susan Carboni, who is the abutter at 22 to 24 Porter Street. And she's talking about or questioning fencing and whatnot. And you just said that you were, you were gonna be putting in privacy fence. And I'm looking at the notation here on your plan and it says existing chain link fence. So is your plan to have chain link or is it to have something more solid that provides a little more privacy?
Correct, yes. We've usually done on our projects, privacy fence, something solid, either PVC or something more tight. This is existing chain link fence and we'll be replacing that. We haven't done any landscaping as of yet till we have decision from the board.
Okay, and is that gonna be a four-foot fence?
For this, no, it's gonna be taller than that, than four feet. Four feet is
Six feet?
Yeah.
You planned about six foot.
Six foot ten.
Okay, and that's gonna run the full property boundary on that side?
Yes, so from the, from the walkway all the way to the end, the back, and coming to the neighbor on the left, to the, to the corner of the, of the deck right here. Just along the sidewalk, we have a retaining wall, so it's gonna-
Can you, can you, again, with your cursor, trace the outline of the fencing, please?
So we're planning to do it all the way on the right side, all the way in the back, and bring it here.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, I think, I think that's sufficient, and I think that addresses her primary, her primary concern, the questions and concerns. It doesn't seem reasonable to have anything less than a four-foot buffer, and there is a four-foot buffer along her mom's property. Again, it's the Susan and Clement Carbone property there showing up on the screen. You are maintaining the four-foot buffer there. There is, there is gonna be some plantings there. There's gonna be a six-foot privacy fence.
Yes.
So, um, that is not a, a concern. That's all shown on your plans. That's all part of your conditions and approval. And then again, I think it's just a little bit of confusion in the plans. Her comment says the plan indicates a six-foot fence on the property line at 18 to 20, but nothing on 22 to 24 Porter. So, I think the plan isn't as clear as it can be. What we're gonna do is we're gonna include in the conditions the outline that you had just showed us, 'cause I think that that's an appropriate, you know, limit of the fencing. She goes on to comment that the six-foot fencing alone isn't sufficient to eliminate the view of the cars parked in the back. A row of greenery such as Abaviti, for instance, tall than six feet should be placed along the fence to restore the green view.
So we have some plantings, as you see right here. Let me click to the, so right here, we can see these plantings. Now, the neighbor right at the end of the property, they have a garage. They don't even see the end of the, the corner. They have a garage there.
On the Carbone property?
Right, yes. So they have a garage here, and it's almost-
The person that's concerned, Olga, is on the other side.
On the other side?
Yeah, which is probably their backyard, I'm guessing. I don't have a-
Oh, the, there's two properties.
No, on the, where it says Carbone, all the way to the, yup, right there. Yup.
Okay, yeah, so yes, they do have a garage right here in the corner.
Okay, I just wanna see if I can.
So there's a driveway separating our properties, and right at the end, they have a garage.
Yeah, so based on, on, so that, their driveway is on that side, and they have the garage in the back. And then the trees will be, you know, a little bit past the house. I, I think, I think what the applicant's proposing is sufficient. Does the board think it's sufficient, the board members?
I would agree.
Okay.
I would as well.
Okay, okay. All right, so it looks like, looks like we are very clear on the buffer. It's 1.6 to 2.6 feet. The conditions that we're gonna be adding is going to be about the fencing that was just talked about, six-foot fence, the limits of the fencing, where it will be on the property. And then my only other suggestion for a condition is that no more than three cars are parked in the rear yard.
Well, that's, that's the goal, and we will be recording also documents for the future owners that will be on their plans.
Yup, we just wanna make sure that it's, it's something after you, you know, deed out the property and stuff, that, you know, we have some recourse against the new owners if they in fact, you know, don't follow the conditions. I know you spent a lot of time on this and you understand it, but sometimes that isn't necessarily, you know, the future owners. So with that, are there any other conditions that the board needs? I see none. We have our landscaping plan, we have our plot plan, and we have our conditions that we just discussed. There is no public comments. We did address the ones that were on the record. Is there a motion?
One second. One, wait, wait. Apparently, there's two people that have their hands up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
They all of a sudden just popped up. Should I unmute them?
Yup. Hi, Libby. Libby?
Speaking on behalf of Trees for Watertown. So, so I, I appreciate the fact that, that all of you have done a fair amount of work trying to improve this as best possible in terms of landscaping. However, I'm, I'm really concerned that the general process is not taking into account the fact that there's very little in the way of healthy tree canopy in that general neighborhood, and that, that this project is gonna remove a substantial percentage of the green canopy in that neighborhood. It's gonna have a really big impact on the environment. It might be that neighbors can't visually directly see because of a garage or something, but it will still impact everyone in that neighborhood to have all that canopy go away. I realize this isn't something that's exactly in your purview, but I really would like you guys to bear in mind that the impact of this kind of project is much bigger than just whether it's, whether it's attractive to the neighborhood. There's an environmental impact that's, that's, that's significant, and it's really sad to see all this green, all this, all this important green infrastructure going away in this neighborhood. That's, I just had that comment to make.
Um, Libby, there are two existing maples that are gonna be maintained in the, I guess it would be the back rear corner, closest to 22 Porter Street. And then they will be supplementing, obviously, with, you know, more of a landscape-style plantings. But they are going to, um, they are gonna retain two trees, and what we probably should do is include that in the conditions to make sure that those trees are not removed, and that those two trees need to remain on the property.
That would be valuable, and I, I would also recommend, perhaps, perhaps Gideon can contribute to this, that, that when all this construction is going on, if you really want those maples to remain and to have long, healthy lifetimes, it's gonna be necessary to make significant efforts during construction to protect their root zones.
The construction has already occurred in the rear. There's a new raised wall back there that was already built as part of the, just the site plan.
Is that the region where those maples are?
Yeah.
It's close to that, yes.
And have the maple roots, were they protected during this process?
So what happened in the back, it was, uh, we had to backfill a little bit to level the area. So, yes, we haven't even touched the roots. They're, they're kinda in between the both properties and the back neighbor, and this property, current property we're working on. So, though, the most certain, there was no damage to the roots because we backfilled with the dirt, the end of the property, leveling it.
So, well, well, I appreciate that, that that was your intention. I hope that was actually the case.
Yes, yes. We, we kept the trees. We really don't remove anything, any trees from the property.
You can see in one of the photos, it's actually in the staff report, Libby, if you're on, accessing the documents online. You can see the two trees just beyond the low retaining wall in the backyard.
There's a photograph?
There is. There's two pictures in the staff report dated, it's, it would be the planning board report, and it's probably dated January 8th. And it's on the second page, there's two little pictures, one of the front and then one of the back where you can see those two trees.
I see, oh, I see. Yeah, I see the pictures. It does look like that retaining wall is right up against those trees, so I'm, I'm imagining that they have been impacted.
The reality is that that is not part of what this relief is, and so we shouldn't spend too much time-
Yeah, sorry for taking time. I just needed to speak for the trees.
Yeah, well, let's, let's just, I, I think it's probably, I'm looking at the aerial photo. I just had, I checked on my phone. I was trying to look for the garage. That the, that area did have a decent canopy. So, why don't we include a condition as well, that those two trees need to remain on the property? And hopefully, you know, the wall doesn't negatively impact them.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Julie, we're gonna get to you in just one second. Mike, was, Mike had his hand up, please. Mike?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Just a couple questions on the, and clarifications on the conditions being proposed. I just wanna make it clear with the applicant and the board that, given there is a driveway on the neighbor's property to the right, that the six-foot fence will not be able to come all the way up to the sidewalk, that there are requirements of the first 15 feet, maximum height is three feet. In addition, if you're putting fences on top of retaining walls, typically you look at the bottom of the retaining wall as part of that fence. So unless you offset the fence off the retaining wall, it's, the total length is limited to six feet, so we can work on that later offline.
Okay.
Number two related to the trees, I, I would suggest that with that condition, as far as the trees remain, that obviously things happen and change with trees. They could become ill, you know, be dying, become a danger, become damaged by wind, whatever, that maybe the condition be expanded that if the tree needs to be removed, that a harvest report needs to be submitted to the town to justify it, and that a tree be replanted.
Yup, that's excellent.
Lastly, just related to the condition of the parking, that no more than three cars be parked back there. That may pose an enforcement issue. It is hard to regulate, you know, how many cars are parked on a property if they're parked in a legal driveway. So, you know, does that extend to, what if there's cars parked in the driveway to the left? Is that going to be an issue? I just don't wanna create a situation where we're babysitting a site with the number of vehicles back there, rather than are there vehicles parked in a legal driveway?
Um, I think, and, and thank you for your comments, Mike. If people park in the driveway, I, I have no concern. I'm talking about the, I, I guess I would say, um, the, is that where they transition to pavers?
Like the rear, the official rear yard rather than the side yard?
Yeah, like where they're showing the car in the driveway, not behind the house. I have no issue with cars parking in the driveway. I just don't want any more than three cars. I guess you could say more than three cars beyond the car shown on the floor plan.
On the pavers, so no more than three cars on the pavers.
Yeah, 'cause isn't that right where the pavers start after that car in the driveway? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yup, we can just reference, maybe, we can just, you know, Mike, if you wanna clarify it so it's not an enforcement issue for you, that's fine. But my comment was related to the backyard. You know, they have a guest over and they pull in the driveway or something. I mean, that's what the driveway's for. I just don't want the whole backyard to turn into, you know, one big car. Okay. All right, are there any other question? We did have one other person in the audience. Julie?
Hi there, this is Paul Gorm. I live at 246 Boylston Street. And I have the same concerns that I had for the January 22nd meeting for this. Whereas, where our houses are in our shared backyard is kind of a unique, almost like bird wing kind of shape. And you, we all share a common back area, which is green and lush and great. And, you know, I'm concerned that if one house, one developer comes in and flips a house, turning their backyard into a parking lot, that the house next door or across the way, that's owned by McKern, Sean, and Stan Realty Associates, will get the same sort of idea. And then flip their house and turn their backyard into a parking lot, and then as houses sell to new owners around us, the same sort of thing's gonna happen. So instead of having a nice, green, lush oasis in the middle of all these homes that people can share and able, we're able to see each other as well, because there currently is no privacy fences erected in this area. And I'm just concerned that by doing this, it'll start a precedent that other people will start to do as well. I mean, it's, it's a real relief in the summertime to have a nice, cool area in the back. And, you know, I think a lot of the, the turning issues for the cars has not been really addressed by the plans that are, that are, that are current. 'Cause if there's gonna be a, a privacy fence erected on the retaining wall that is on the Benjamin Donovan property line, I don't understand how those cars are gonna be able to turn efficiently and get out of there. That, that's one thing being said. The second is that, you know, unfortunately, there's a big, beautiful tree that you can see from satellite photos that was close to the house. That's been cut down, and that's where the, one of the two parking spaces in the back is. And if you look on the, um, what's it called? The staff report, if that, that picture that's on the right-hand side, if you look in that back corner, you can see all the pieces of the stump laying there. So that, you know, unfortunately, what's done is done there. And from what I understand, the fill that was put into the backyard to make it level came out of the basement of the house as they were digging it out. Was any testing, testing done on that soil before they put it into the backyard? So, my concern is that it seems like so many different steps of this project are concerned about increasing the value of this home, but not being a good neighbor to the people that are around it. That's my concern, 'cause I really wanna keep a nice, lush green yard, even though it's terribly small. I'd like my neighbors, I wanna share my neighbors, get to know my neighbors as well. I don't wanna get to know their cars and their privacy fences. And that's, that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I, I think that, you know, what is being proposed here in the back, and just so that you, it seems like you've been following the case. The only relief that the applicant is getting is for the side buffer. That's required to be four feet, and they're already existing non-conforming, and they're altering it. This proposal, along with any other backyard in Watertown, they can put parking in the rear yard if they meet the requirements of, of the ordinance. And this particular applicant isn't seeking any relief from the distance of the parking to the rear property line or the opposite sideline. They're actually asking for something to, that is currently there to be extended. So looking at, looking at the, the project overall, while it might seem like there's a lot going on, it's not a lot of relief that, that is being sought for, for what's happening here. So, I understand your concerns, but I think the applicant, at least from my perspective, has addressed the issues that have been raised by the board. I don't wanna speak to the other members, and, and they may not, they may not, you know, look favorably upon this application, but based upon the plans, the landscaping, in combination with the treatment and whatnot, I think that the applicant has, has, has put their best foot forward and come a long way since, since the first meeting. So I just wanted to kinda recap a couple things, and just so that you know that, that you can park in the backyard, and that, that they don't need any relief from that rear dimension for this particular parking layout.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna make a quick note. The neighbor has mentioned a tree in the middle, and he asked, there was a tree. It was an old cherry tree that was actually dry. And I do have pictures when that was removed, the state of that. So that tree was too, too dangerous to dry and completely dead when we took on the property. The property was completely overgrown, and I'm sure the, the neighbor does remember how it looked before- before we started doing the renovation and actually um making something beautiful out of that property. So, um.
Okay, thank you for those additional comments. Um, so we had, um, I I'm gonna, does any of the board members have anything else? And did you wanna make any other comments? Uh, doesn't look like he has his hand up again. Um, okay, so I'm gonna close the um public hearing uh on this matter. And what I'd like to do is, um, we had some conditions, we had some comments from the zoning enforcement officer to make some revisions to those conditions. Um, the fencing and and what it needs to be, uh how it needs to be constructed to comply with the ordinance, and then we clarified uh where those three cars will be parked, and that the driveway is the driveway and can be used, you know, like any other driveway um in the community here. So if there's no other questions or comments, um I will close the hearing. We did have our planning um report that was dated um January eighth, uh this is a continued hearing, this is our third session. We did have a comment from an abutter that we addressed, uh and at this point, I'd like to um entertain a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the board approve the special permit finding to authorize the extension of the non-conforming driveway.
There's been a motion made for the um approval of the finding with the conditions as discussed by Member Heap, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, all those in favor by roll call, Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Flo?
Aye.
And an aye for Member Sancho Chi-Razi. That is approved. I wanna thank the applicant for, um, you know, putting the effort in and revising the revising the materials, it makes this a lot easier for us to understand uh what you wanna do and and to keep the record very clear.
Thank you very much, the board.
Okay, have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is uh ten forty-one. Um, we have one other case, I don't, Attorney Lightner, are you here with us? Um, I said I was gonna go until eleven o'clock this evening, that's not gonna be enough time to get through your case. Would you like to continue, or would you like to spend twenty minutes telling us about your project?
Um, if we were to continue, when are we continuing to?
To next month.
Oh, to next month, well, I I leave it to your discretion, I don't mind starting, uh if it's gonna help us for next month. Uh, to begin tell, giving you the narrative, but if you think it's better that we begin fresh next month, uh we can also do that.
I I I would, I would, I would like for you to 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 try to get it all into one session. Um, and I would like for you to um to make sure that there there was some extensive comments um in the record. I wanna make sure that those are addressed, and maybe it will give you a little chance to to look at those in advance of the meeting, um primarily from from the district counselor. Uh, she had some very good points and some very good comments, and I think that um that there's some opportunity to to look into those a little bit further. Um, it is late, this was our first Zoom meeting.
Yes.
I.
How do I look on TV?
As good as Nate. So I appreciate it, and I'm sorry that you had to, I I didn't, I thought we were gonna move a little bit quicker tonight. Um, it's just this format seems a little bit slower, but we will be back here on on May, and what I'd like to do is put you and your client first on the uh May agenda.
Okay.
If we have any new cases, or we have anything scheduled for that yet, Gideon or Steve, do we have anything?
Nothing. No.
Okay, so we'll have a meeting um on, I I believe it was May twenty-seventh?
Yeah, whatever the date is.
Yeah, I think it was. Yes, May twenty-seventh, the fourth Tuesday, okay, um, so you'll be the one and only case, and we'll have plenty of time to deliberate. Um, and I appreciate, again, I'm sorry for making you wait all night, but it's it's just late, and my eyes are burning. Um, okay, with that, is there a motion to continue this public hearing into May twenty-seventh?
Removed.
There a second?
Second.
Uh, by roll call, Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Flo?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And then um I just wanna very quickly thank everyone for their cooperation uh this evening, and some special thanks to the staff for really um pulling this off and putting this together, I've I've titled Gideon a Zoom master, um and really, I just, I honestly didn't think we were gonna be able to pull this off, but everyone did an awesome job. Um, and thanks for monitoring home and those that tuned in and asked their questions, um really happy with how things happened. So the last and final motion. Anybody?
Move that we adjourn.
Yay, roll call, Member Ferris?
Aye.
Member Heap?
Aye.
Member Donato?
Aye.
Member Bragwin?
Aye.
Member Flo?
Aye.
And a big aye for me.